I'm waiting just a few minutes for my distinguished citizen to lead us in the pledge. And he's coming right in now, so we'll be able to get started. You're right on time, Mr. Brown. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Russell, Counselor Piss, Counselor Ross, here.
Here. Here. Tonight, I'd like to continue our tradition of having Villa Park's distinguished citizens leading us in the pledge. Tonight, we have James Brown. James Brown is a Korean War veteran. He was drafted in the Army in the early 1950s. He lived in Detroit, Michigan at the time where he grew up and attended college. He was born outside of Birmingham, Alabama, in a small place called Pocahontas. Population was mostly his relatives. His job in the Army was computer radar specialist. He's in charge of a 75-millimeter anti-aircraft weapons unit. Before being honorably discharged from military, he met, married his wife Patricia, who was also in the Air Force. She was assistant to the Inspector General of the Air Force. She was also a Korean War veteran. Patricia was selected Miss Air Force in 1955. We probably should have Patricia here.
No doubt.
James and Patricia have four daughters and 14 grandchildren, including two great-grandchildren. They've been married 62 years and lived in Villa Park for 45 years. Today, I will ask Korean veteran James Brown to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you, James. I have something for you, James.
I'm sorry I'm late because a gentleman was supposed to call me and tell me.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council staff welcomes you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the clerk before the meeting's scheduled time. Speak cards can be found in interested hall chambers. Speakers may be limited to a time period of five minutes. First, we'll start off with our presentation with recognition of the Villa Park High School boys' basketball team. I want to congratulate the team on advancing and playing in the 2017 CIF championship game. I wanted to indicate also, my son played basketball for Villa Park High School. They never achieved this level, nowhere near it. So, this is particularly gratifying to me to be able to provide this recognition. Want to provide this certificate to Coach Reynolds and a Villa Park pin to each team member.
Can we get a picture with the council with the team?
Don't embarrass us, they're much taller than we are.
Yes. Be up to standing in front of them.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As usual, I'll start off with Villa Park once again had an unusually good month as it pertains to both crime and traffic accidents for the month of April. Starting with your Part 1 crimes, you had one petty theft on the 9,000 block of Smoke Tree where a package was taken from the outside of a house. You had one significant home robbery, correction, home burglary, where it appears that a suspect used a rock to break through a back window and there was a high-value loss of over $20,000, which consisted mostly of jewelry. Investigations are still working, leads and evidence on this, and as it stands right now, there's no other updates that I can provide, but as soon as information develops, whatever I can put forth, I will. We also had one circumstance of grand theft on the 19,000 block of Mesa Drive. Two saddles were taken from a stable. And then for your Part 2 crimes, you had three acts of vandalism. One on the 17,000 block of Athens where tires were slashed. One on the 18,000 block of James Road where a front light of a house was broken. And then one on the 9,000 block of Orchard where somebody had spray-painted Satan's doctor on the front gate. Apparently, does it happen numerous times, but our investigations detail was able to figure out who the suspect was and take him into custody shortly thereafter. The number of citations that we issued last month were down, but that's a good thing because we only had one accident in the city last month. And that was unfortunately, a traffic accident with injuries that happened on Villa Park Road where a gentleman was driving, made an abrupt U-turn, and went into the car in the opposite lane of traffic. So, the injuries were enough for him to go to the hospital, but at least it wasn't a fatality. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions, Lieutenant? Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff and residents of Villa Park. My name is Andy Kovacs, Division Chief, Orange County Fire Authority. Last month, there were a total of 38 calls for service in the city of Villa Park. There was one incident that I want to specifically highlight. It occurred on May 11th. Engine 23 responded to a reported drowning. Upon arrival, they found an elderly female who was deceased in the pool. And it appears that she had maybe suffered a medical emergency and as a consequence fell into the pool. I know that the Orange County Sheriff's Department was investigating that. But this really brings me to my seasonal safety message this evening, and that's of drowning prevention. Already in the county, we've had 15 drownings this calendar year, and the weather hasn't quite warmed up. Summer has not kicked off and is not in full swing yet. So, I just wanted to present a couple of quick reminders. The first was just to designate a water watcher, somebody that's watching the water at all times. And the Orange County Fire Authority provides some water watcher tags that that designated individual would wear around their neck to signify, identify that they are the person that's watching the pool or the children in the pool at all times. Secondly, just consider the multiple water safety barriers. We certainly don't recommend just having one. We encourage alarms, fences, pool covers, et cetera, to prevent those multiple layers. And then, of course, never swim alone. Fire Chief Jeff Bowman's a member of the Orange County Task Force on Drowning Prevention and is committed to preventing drowning accidents. I would really encourage the residents to visit the ocfa.org website for more information or the Orange County Drowning Prevention website. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I had one. How does the 15 drownings this year compare to previous years?
It's about the same. We haven't really seen a dramatic increase or decrease just because it's still so early in the season, but that's on average for this time of the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, our council meeting attendance reports. I'll start off with the Orange County Muskegon Vet Control District. They, the board met on May the 18th, and there were two items on the agenda. One was the 2017-18 budget that we approved for the upcoming budget year. And the second item was to approve the engineering reports for assessment District 1 and 2. Orange County Vet Control District gets their primary income from property taxes and two assessment districts they have. And each one of these assessment districts requires an engineering report to be approved prior to making an assessment, and that we approve the report at that meeting. That concludes my report, and I will go to the Orange County Sanitation District.
Okay, I attended the Board of Directors meeting on April 26th and the Sanitation District's Operations Committee meeting on May 3rd. And at both these meetings, staff reports on the district's asset management and capital improvement programs were reviewed and discussed. Also, the April 10th edition of Time Magazine cited the groundwater recycling system, a joint project of the Orange County Sanitation District and the Orange County Water District, as an innovative infrastructure project. Let me read to you what they said about this world-renowned project. "One group of structures nothing to look at houses an Orange County Sanitation District water treatment facility. Each day, some 185 million gallons of raw sewage flows in, and eventually the treated water flows out. Not toxic, but not potable either. This waste water used to be pumped through long pipes to disperse in the Pacific Ocean, but now more than half the treated product goes next door to nondescript facilities operated by the Orange County Water District. The Orange County Water District drains the water through microscopic fibers, then forces it by reverse osmosis through superfine membranes, and finally bumbards it with high-intensity ultraviolet light. What flows out of the facility in volumes sufficient to meet the daily demands of roughly 850,000 people is as pure as a sparkling glass of premium ice water. Pumping station return it to the Orange County Aquifer to percolate into wells for future drinking. And we pump from that same aquifer for the Toronto Water District. The process costs less and consumes less energy than importing water from the Colorado River, and undoubtedly also is cheaper than taking salt water from the ocean and trying to desalinate it." So, anyway, it's something that we can be, as a larger community of Villa Park, very proud of. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Bob. Orange County Fire Authority, their board meeting is this Thursday, so I do not have anything to report at this time. We're going to the OC Library Advisory Board. Budget and Finance Committee has no report. Community Development and Public Safety?
Oh, Community Development and Public Safety. We met on, the Community Development and Public Safety Committee met on May 1st. And in response to a request from a resident, our city manager has agreed to provide more detail in the description of agenda items so that it's a little clearer what we're actually going to be discussing and to make the purpose and intent more clear. We also discussed a variance to fence height limits at 19060 Sera Villa Drive, and that will be, that item will be addressed in today's agenda. We also discussed a proposed variance for a non-permitted structure that was in construction at 18451 Toronto. Another item related to the Community Development and Public Safety Committee meeting, all councilmen have received training on compliance with the Brown Act at city expense. The Brown Act was adopted in 1954 and establishes requirements for transparency in public decision-making in California. Despite receiving training on compliance with the Brown Act and repeated admonitions to refrain from doing so, one of our councilmen insisted on again violating the Brown Act by again disrupting the council, the committee meeting with public comments on an agenda item at this committee. Although this, councilmen are welcome to attend the Community Development and Public Safety Committee meetings, I trust that at future meetings, councilmen that do attend will comply with the Brown Act in future meetings. Thank you.
I have a comment on the, on the meeting. There was also some direction to staff regarding zoning changes. If you can maybe let the public know what was going on there. So, what's on the agenda that we discussed?
There was some discussion about zoning. We have some, some lots that were identified in some months past that we identified that are zoned, estate zone, estate lots which are 20,000 square feet or larger. And these lots are less than 20,000 square feet. And they're required to comply with all the setback requirements that a normal estate lot would have. Some of these lots are substantially smaller than 20,000 square feet. Some of these lots are substantially smaller than 20,000 square feet and are, you know, the estate zoning requirements reduce the flexibility of how those, those property owners can develop their property in the future. We're trying to anticipate that, you know, that at some point in time, those property owners may come and want to do development and rather than having, waiting until that time and discussing variances on a point, item by item basis or property by property basis, we've asked staff to look into coming up with sliding or adjusted setback requirements to improve the flexibility for those homeowners so that they can develop their properties. And we're waiting to get responses back from them on that.
Also, there was an item regarding staff doing work on private property. If you could go over that because that was something that was not specifically identified on and there were several people here wanting to discuss that.
Okay. Yes, we, cities, we've noticed on, for a number of years that some city staff is selectively conducting some landscape maintenance for certain residents throughout the city and we have limited staff, staff resources available. So we're encouraging our staff to focus on maintaining our city property, including our streets, our medians and so forth, and improve code enforcement to address landscape maintenance issues that may be impacting line of sight or sidewalk egress.
One more item is that the last council meeting, the council voted three to two to have the sober living issue be sent to the CDC and it was not on the agenda. Can you explain why it was not on that?
Well, of course, our last council meeting, I forgot what that, what date that was, the last council meeting was, pardon? April 25th and the CDC meeting, I believe, was May 1st. There was not time to post publicly notice addition of that to the, the agenda and will be on the agenda for our next CDC meeting coming up on, was it June 1st?
Actually, that's not the information I received. I know that staff asked to put it on and it was my understanding that you declined them to put it on.
Is that what happened?
There was more than enough time to put something that the council ruled on. Otherwise, if they're not going to follow council's direction, I don't know why we have committed. You put a human resource issue on the CDC and you spoke by name regarding employees and how they interact in their job, which quite frankly is a dangerous situation for us. But to not put something on that this council voted on, you're completely disregarding what was on. So the sober living, that was something that you wanted. You wanted to take this on and I think you owe it to the community to put those items on now.
And it, I saw a draft of the agenda for the meeting coming up in a few days and it's on there. And why, can you refresh my memory as to why it was not put on the agenda for the meeting?
I believe we asked and you felt there was, we should have it on the next agenda. And that was basically the discussion. So there was no real extensive discussion, so.
I don't even recall.
Well, we do have concerned citizens that have come to us over the past, over the course of the past few months about this. You know, I was a little bit passionate about being involved with this before and part of the reason I showed up at the CDC meeting because I wanted to understand the direction it was going and how, you know, things were being done to help facilitate new suggestions and new ideas that we can incorporate into current practices. So I think it's somewhat urgent and I'd like to see something move along if we, if we possibly can.
Well, it is on the agenda for the meeting.
Fifth meeting at 6:30.
Yeah. So you're welcome to attend.
Thank you.
And the agenda will be more detailed this time so that the people know what we're talking about because zoning changes and items are very, very important because people have been grandfathered, they've bought the property and are to be able to change their own property that they've owned for 40 years is, is going to be a very hot, hot item. We want to make sure that it's very detailed so they know if they can come.
We believe, we've got direction, we believe that we've created a more extensive agenda that will detail it so they'll be clear about those items.
I think all the committees need to do that. I've seen some vagueness in several of the committees and it's not just that one in particular, but our residents noticed that one in particular, but me personally, I noticed that we are somewhat, we all, in all committees are somewhat vague about what the agenda is and what we're trying to accomplish. So we need to encourage as members of the city council, as well as city hall, to make sure that we talk to the folks that are putting agendas together to be a little bit more concise, you know, and to the point about what's being done because everything that's done in these committees affects the people of Villa Park. So we want to make sure that people are informed and informed enough in advance so they can come and speak and be a part of the process, so.
And of course, any decisions made by, or recommendations made by the committee come before this council for further public hearing and discussion.
Understood.
Candidly, it might actually be fortuitous that there was a slight delay. If folks have been reading the Register, there's a pretty fantastic article on the residential impacts of all types of different rehab facilities and sober living homes and other facilities. And I would encourage people to read up on that.
I have a suggestion on sober issues, sober living facilities issue. I didn't think about it at the time, but we can't do it this meeting, but I'd like to know what the council would think about since councilman Pitts and Councilwoman Fasenelli are so passionate about this idea. What do we have an ad hoc committee to allow them to handle the issue?
I'd like it to come, I'd like it to go to a full council, which is what I suggested last time, not have a committee. I think that the five of us need to deal with it.
Together.
Together and not as a committee and in the public eye and it is a serious issue. I don't wish to be on an ad hoc committee. I really did want it to be in front of the council.
I'll take my recommendation back then.
Thanks for that.
Okay. I just, I just think it should be handled in committee before bringing to the council. And I thought that would be appropriate way to do it since you guys are passionate about it, that you could come up with some recommendations to the council.
Well, I think the majority was so passionate about taking it on their own that maybe they have some ideas we don't, but I would just like to see it on the agenda.
Okay. Anything else for Community Development, Public Safety?
No, that concludes my report.
About Human Resources?
Good evening. The Human Resources Committee meet, met, excuse me, on May 5th and discussed the upcoming salary resolution with modest increases in the upcoming budget that I'm sure Michelle can speak much more intelligently on than I can. We also discussed a few other matters and had some comments by a city council member in attendance. There was some cautionary measures taken so, to avoid Brown Act issues and since that time, it has come to light that any, any discussion by council members beyond being just a mere observer would be considered potentially a Brown Act violation. So we appreciate everybody's concern for the residents of Villa Park, but obviously we want to make sure that we were doing things the right way. Thank you.
Any questions? City Schools Advisory?
Well, we had a great meeting. I would say for the first, first time that I attended the school advisory, there are a lot of passionate people in that group. All the reps attended from various schools. We had also seven public attendees that attended as well. So I think it was a great turnout for the very first meeting. Unfortunately, it was the last one for the year. Probably won't take place until again next year, but there are a lot of activities planned at the schools between now and the end of school year. Couple of things I think we ought to be mindful of is June the 9th is a campout at Serrano and also graduation is June 15th. And they did bring up in the past, they've requested that parking restrictions be lifted that night of graduation and I think you took that as an action item to, to help with that.
And I've advised it, it's June 14th and 15th because the kindergarten is June 14th.
Oh, kindergarten, okay.
June 15th will be the upper grades with the exception of the high school, which is at Fred Kelly Stadium. But we've advised the principals of two elementaries and the Serra Villa that on the 14th and 15th, the, and we've advised the sheriff as well.
Okay.
That those actions will be taken.
Okay. And then questions came up in the meeting and I've also had subsequent questions and this may be something that we have to take offline with Lieutenant Puckett, not sure, but there were questions that came up regarding the crossing guard at Villa Park Road. I don't have any history. I just remember driving by there all the time and seeing a crossing guard, you know, taking the little kids across the street, but they're no longer there and there's questions about can we get it back and what's, you know, what's the impact?
They're terrible, they've been missing.
They've been missing. So I didn't know if that was something we needed to discuss later. It's fine if we do, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that, that came up in the, in the meeting as well as I've had some private citizens call me about it who have little children that go to school over on that side of the, of town, so. And then there was also, they brought up red curb painting to minimize parking on the stop sign. I've noticed, several people have noticed that they're, they're parking up against the stop sign. They're not parking to 30 feet like they should. So we see a multitude of parking violations there that, especially Villa Park Elementary School, but several of them. And they'd like us to take some action around red curb painting if possible at the school, so.
We've spoken to, in response, we've spoken to the maintenance staff and they are going around identifying which curbs need to be painted and whatnot. We've also spoken to the sheriff's office and deputies about making sure they do regular patrols of parking and, and monitor those areas in particular. So they were indicating that they would, you know, follow through on that.
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
One item that the group brought up, which is a little disturbing to us, is they asked this question, is there anything we need to be aware of that the city council is going to pass during the summer while school is out? And that question was asked to us because in the last couple of years, parking restrictions, striping, there's been some change that has happened when they've been out of town. And it was disturbing to hear that because when we looked back, they were correct. They, they have a perceived feeling that when school is out, that this council is going to do something with the roads, with the striping, with the parking, and it's going to be more restrictive for them. All we could do is answer that we gave them everything that was on the table, but I wanted to at least have everybody know that that's, that was a concern of these people who came and they specifically asked it. So if, if anything having to do, the CDC or the LEAC committee has anything that they're planning to do in or around the school, it would be best to bring it up now or wait till September because this place emptied out after June 15th and I think they would like to have a voice. So I'm just, I'm the messenger here and if you'd like to hear it yourself, you should look at the recording, but we wanted to make sure that everybody, everybody knew that. It's disturbing to hear that from, from the residents.
Well, Deanna, as you well know and as the community should know, that all of the committees are advisory to the council. The, neither the CDC, the LEAC Investment Advisory Committee or whatever can't do anything without submitting a recommendation to the city council and the city council has to take the action. So, you know, those committees, none of these committees can do anything without this full council hearing it and us making the decision, not, not them.
But they don't want you to take it up.
Their advisory, their advisory only.
They're asking, they were asking if there was anything that they should know. We just answered, we didn't, we gave them everything that we had. That, that was it. And if you'd like to discuss it with the residents, you're welcome to. We're just making sure that you're aware that that's what they thought of.
And last but not least, I think we, all the council members got a, received a letter from Villa, Villa Park Elementary School looking for speakers on career day. And, you know, also anyone in the community that's, you know, we have an application here at city hall that you can fill out and use. It's also one, I think, that's online. So please take advantage of this because this is great. Unfortunately, I'm out of town and cannot do it, but it'd be great to stand up. I, I used to do it years ago and it was really fun to stand in front of those kids and get them all excited about what I do, so. And I know there are a lot of career people in this room that, you know, could pass along a lot of great knowledge to the, to the children in, in the school. And there's 600 attendees, so it'll be well attended and they'll be very attentive, I can assure you. But Steve has this and I think we all have this in our, in our email too as well. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
No report.
Investment Advisory Committee had no meetings, so no report. The Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
Well, I'm excited. This weekend is our Villa Park Great American Picnic 2017. It starts Sunday at 11:30 and goes to 4:30, so I encourage everybody to come and join us. Got a lot of fun games and vendors who have agreed to, to come and, and, you know, provide knowledge for our kids about different aspects. I have a friend who is doing software to help kids learn in school and she's agreed to come and be a vendor at, at the, at the picnic. We're also looking for volunteers to help set up and take down the event. It's over here at Villa Park High School and thanks to them, the, the Orange County Schools has agreed to, to take on the insurance liability so that the Community Services Foundation did not have to do that this year, so we really appreciate and thank them for, for that as well. So that's, that's the Sunday.
Okay.
Look forward to seeing everybody there.
I found this article that I'd like to share with you. It's the Villa Park Picnic set for October 27th, 1974. Which was our first picnic. It started at nine o'clock, it was at the lake and the article, once I found it was little cherished by me, it says, "It'll be prepared in the good old fashioned way by notable VP gourmet chefs, including Fred Fasenelli, Rupi Sheer, Fred Casco, Frank DeSantis, and Bob Switzer and others." So my father-in-law was one of the, one of the first people there and October 27th is a long time away and this was a city-sponsored event at the time with the Women's League Health. So it was a great article to find. Back then, wanted to share that with everyone.
And one last thing on the foundation, we are in the process of working with Steve to load all the foundation documentation from the past on the city server and giving everyone access to that, to that server and to those documents. It's been a little bit, we found books that weren't updated, you know, it had some outdated documentation and things like that from a compliance perspective and so forth. So Crystal is, is making sure all that's up to date and then we're loading everything in and giving everyone access to that. Also, we're adding the check register to the financials submitted to the city. I think that's important for transparency in spending, so look forward to doing that and seeing that going forward, so. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? We're on the foundation. If not, we'll go to the Friends of Villa Park Library.
No meeting. No meeting.
No meeting? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to say just some quick words. On May 18th, there was the Villa Park Home Security Fair. It was a fantastic event that was standing room only in council chambers here. 60-plus people attended by my count. Despite having very, very low crime in Villa Park and the fantastic job that the sheriff's department is doing, it's still obviously a big, big concern by Villa Park residents. There were a number of vendors here that provided their services and answered questions about how folks can make themselves feel safer in their, in the residences and in their community. And I just wanted to send my thanks out to the sheriff's department, to Mary and Wayne Solzel with Neighborhood Watch, who have really done a fantastic job and of course, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, which has made a tremendous impact in our community as well as our reserves and, and other volunteers. Well done and look forward to next year even being bigger and perhaps even having some, some booths outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have two items. First, I did a test Serrano Water Board's monthly meeting. Their meeting is normally at 8:30 in the morning, it's believed it's on a second Tuesday. And we do have a new Board of Director, Brad Reese, which is a former councilman and mayor. He has taken the director's seat for District 3, I think if I remember correctly. So that is news for us. And along the lines, it's, this is something that came to us and it's not out of vector control, but this is something that I want the citizens to be aware of that's coming here to Villa Park and we're going to get a little bit more information on our Channel 3 soon. The city manager and I met with the Orange, where was he from? The Orange County?
He was the only county, Orange County Agriculture Commissioner.
Agriculture Commissioner, okay. There is a bug and I'm going to try to pronounce it correctly. It is called Kwang Kwang Bing. And what, what this is, is a citrus pest and it has devastated the state of Florida and its crops. It gets on the tree, infects the tree, and within five years, the tree's dead. And they have now found that there's trees infected in Southern California. They found the first one, Hacienda Heights, and then they found some in the San Gabriel Valley. They found 46 of them. Last Wednesday, they found a tree in Anaheim. So what does that mean to us? Actually, they called us immediately and there's a quarantine on citrus. And that also, that includes Villa Park. What that means is if you go to Home Depot, there's not going to be any citrus trees What that means is if you go to Home Depot, there's not going to be any citrus trees that they can sell to you. If you go to Lulz, there isn't any trees. And there is a big circle because we are in that quarantine area, although we have no infection here as of yet. So what they're going to do is they're going to come around to your front yards, they're going to put traps, the big yellow traps around your tree, and they may knock on your door. And when they knock on your door, they're going to ask you if you have citrus trees in your backyard. And if you say yes and allow them in your backyard, they will, so they will put the traps around your trees and they will also take samples of the leaves. The leaves will then go to Sacramento. Within three days, five days, they will have an answer. They will have an answer whether or not the tree is infected. If the tree's infected, they will come back and they will remove your tree at their cost. And that's the short version of what is happening. Since they didn't find anything here, we're not right in the immediate threat where they're going to knock on the door. It is in Anaheim. So they're going to be placing these traps outside. They will be wearing their uniform. You'll see them, they will have identification on them. If you're home, you might see them, they might knock on your door letting you know that they're going to do it. For lack of a better word, you can't say no because it's a big threat. But they will remove the trees if they find that it is infected. The problem here is that when the bug gets on it, it could be five years before the tree actually shows that it's been infected. So it's, it's called Kwang Kwang Bing. And they have forwarded to us videos that'll go on Channel Three. They're also forwarding us materials that we're going to have here in City Hall that you'll be able to pick up, that you'll be able to read upon, but this just came up and it's about six days old here in Anaheim, so I wanted to bring that to, to your attention.
I would like to add, though, there is no threat to a human if you consume a citrus from that. And it's really important because the natural worry is that somebody's going to take something. So there is no threat for human ingestion of any of these citrus. They're going to be mis, you could tell if they're infected because they're discolored and misshapen and they fall from the tree sooner than they would otherwise fall from the tree. But I make, I do want to make sure because that's, I don't want to.
Right. And it's only citrus. It's only citrus. It's not avocado, it's not any other, only citrus. That's my bug report. Even though it's not vector.
Anything else? If not, we'll go to the public comment area. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, providing no action may be taken on off agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and thirty minutes for all comments. Do we have any comment cards?
No, we have not received.
Do we have anyone from the public would like to make a comment? If not, then we'll move on to the next one, which is the public hearing. First public hearing is to review the, to waive readings of the full, of all ordinance's resolution on the agenda. I don't believe we need a staff report on this. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Still moved.
Second?
Um, I have some, I have some discussion.
Oh, you want some discussion? Well, you can second it, you'll have discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, now we can have discussion.
I'll second it. I'd like to part this out. I'd like to, I'd like to part out the adoption of the resolution and part out the, you're making the motion, and part out the waive of the variance of the application fee.
No, 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 no. This is, this is one about waiving the full reading of all ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I moved ahead.
You're on the second one.
Yes, and that's good. I want no discussion.
All right. I know we've never had discussion this before.
No.
Get ahead of yourself.
So it's been moved in second, can I have a roll call, please?
The moving, meeting was going too fast. Okay. Councilwoman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, now our next public hearing, consideration of variance two thousand seventeen dash oh one at one nine oh six oh Saravella Drive. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay, this item is, is item has actually been on the agenda several times. It has been to the CDC several times. Our planning manager is here to make a presentation and bring you up to speed.
Mayor, members of the city council, the variance application for you this evening for your consideration, as Steve mentioned, was initially brought before the city council on February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, after receiving comments from the public and considering information provided by city staff. City council directed city staff to send the application back to the Community Development and Public Safety Committee to allow the public additional time to review, discuss, and provide feedback to the committee. This was scheduled, this meeting was scheduled April tenth, two thousand seventeen, and as directed by city council, notices for this meeting were mailed out to property owners within five hundred feet radius of the subject property approximately thirty days prior to the meeting. There were two neighbors that attended the meeting. Mr. Michael Lepit, sorry if I watch the name, who lived across the street primarily was expressing concerns about the glare from a light fixture at the subject address and questioned whether or not it was in compliance with the city's lighting ordinance. Ms. Kelsey Dory, who also lives across the street, spoke in opposition to the variance request and expressed concern about the proposed landscape plans and how it may not be designed and effective in covering the solid block walls as well as softening the appearance of the wrought iron fencing along the property line. After further discussion, the committee members directed city staff to continue this item to the next Community Development and Public Safety Committee meeting, which was May first, to allow city staff to follow up with the property owner to discuss these items and, which would include the, the lighting, the landscape plan, and also swinging security gates at the bottom of the driveway. The property owner was not able to attend this meeting. He was out of state to attend the family matters. Prior to the May first Community Development and Public Safety Committee meeting, city staff met with the property owner about the main issues that were brought up. With respect to the lighting, the property owner explained that he has lowered the wattage of the light to a ten watt LED bulb and stated that it's not left on all night. City staff is also following up on this matter to ensure that the lighting, the light that Mr. Lepit was concerned about is in compliance with the city's lighting ordinance. Relative to the landscape plans, the property owner and city staff will review it and if necessary, add appropriate landscape material to ensure that the walls and wrought iron fence are reasonably covered and screened. Finally, city staff reviewed the site plan for the property and confirmed that the swinging security gate at the bottom of the driveway is beyond the twenty-foot setback requirement as measured from the front property line, so it's not part of this variance request. And based on the information presented, committee members voted to recommend approval of this application to a full city council. In conclusion, public hearing notices were again mailed out to property owners within three hundred feet, ten Calhoun days before this meeting as required by the municipal code. And to date, city staff has not received any additional comments or concerns for or against this application. And that concludes my brief overview of this item and I'll do my best to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions with staff?
Just to comment, it seems like we're, we're mixing apples and oranges in our pursuit to, to approve his variance. We're mixing code enforcement and, and, and variance together into things. He's, he's put out an application for variance and because of public comment and things like that, we've delayed him getting his variance approved. So I just ask in the future, we'd be mindful of our citizens by keeping the two separate if at all possible. Code enforcement take its track and variance take its track and not mix the two together and, and mire down the process with the homeowner and cause them additional pain and, and so forth by delaying this. And I'm sure it's cost money and things like that. So that's the only thing I ask me personally, is that we, we consider that and take that into consideration for future, okay?
Any additional questions? If not, is anyone here to speak on the hearing from the public? If not, I'll bring you back to the, to the council. Is there council discussion on item?
I want to make sure that in the variance, the actual variance, there's no, there isn't any restrictions on this lighting, is there?
No, there, there's no discussion about the lighting. That's a separate issue that will be handled at staff level.
Okay, all right, please.
And that's part of the, the city ordinance as a lighting ordinance, so that that will be in compliance. Any code enforcement issue would be handled. So it's, it's separate from the city's discussion.
Any further council discussion? Or do I have a motion on this item?
I have a motion to move the variance, item number one, to move adopting the resolution of the variance two zero one seven zero one, but only item number one to move the variance.
And to be clear, you mean item number one of staff recommendation?
Yeah, I see, so, yeah, there's, the recommendations is one and two, and I, I make the motion to move item number one.
Do I have a second?
I, I'd like to make a comment. I, I don't agree with waiving the fee because it sets a precedence with other, other people. However, I feel compassionate about the time it's taken for us to do this, so I think there may be some, some offset or something like that, that, that we may consider, but I'm against, and kind of second what she said, waiving fees for things because, you know, the next person comes along, next person comes along, everybody's going to want their fees waived and there's going to be a problem. So that's the only reason I'm against waiving the fee. But in, in all honesty, the, what, what we've gone through with this gentleman, I'd like to see us do something to help him out.
Could staff provide us with the rationale of why you're making a recommendation to waive the fees?
The, and I'll let Ray do it, but basically, the applicant has paid over a hundred thousand dollars to construct a public right-of-way, and secondarily, the timing has delayed the process, so we felt that from that recommendation, again, we defer to the council with the recommendation being that, that the city has benefited significantly as a result of these actions. So with that in mind, we make the recommendation forward. We, we've received more, far more than thirty-two hundred dollars worth of benefit as a result. So that would be, that's the recommendation. Again, it's, it's a council decision.
Has, has there been any involvement from any, any of the councilmen here? Specifically, Bob, have you had any involvement with the homeowner at all on this variance prior to this coming to council?
Involvement?
Any involvement, whether it's been you've looked at his plans or... There was an email that I found in the file that Jared had provided me that one of our staff members back in two thousand fifteen had told you about some papers about a dispute about the wall variance. And I'm just wanting to make sure that there wasn't any personal involvement.
I don't, I don't recall even being aware of this until the, the infrastructure tour we took in January. And Mr. Leon, we never met before the past couple of months, if I recall.
The first CDC meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, there was an email sent to you regarding a dispute at one nine zero six zero Saravella. Unclear on the issue, something with building and engineering with Mr. Leon's name. That was sent to you by a staff member on September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen.
I have no recollection.
And it just seems like a long, long time ago and we've had so much trouble with this property, I find it. I, I'm not, we're not quite sure what happened here. It's a shame that it's taken so long, so you don't recall that, you don't recall what went on there?
No, I, I, Ray, I know that Bill and Jared and you had an extensive interaction with Mr. Leon on this property and the development of the, and also with Akram. Yes, so there has been a fair amount of back and forth between city staff and Mr. Leon in the development of the ultimate design and what was implemented.
All right, I'll, I'll forward the email to Steve Franks just for the record then, because it did go to you.
Well, we have a motion on this item. Do we have a second?
Oh, and can you repeat the motion?
My motion is to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen three three zero, which is item number one.
That's to approve the variance but not the, but not waive the fee?
Right, and I'm going to take it separately, if that's okay.
For the correct record, it's three three eight zero?
Three, okay, two zero one seven, three three eight zero?
Eight zero, you said zero zero.
Excuse me, three three eight zero.
Oh, you want to take them separately?
Please.
Okay, I'll second it then. Been moved in second and a further discussion? If not, could we have roll call?
Okay, this is for approval of the recommended action one.
Yes.
Only. That's Councilwoman Fassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Now, on the second item, do I have a motion on the second item, which is to waive the fee?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion?
I think I said bye-bye. I think I said bye-bye.
All right, roll, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call?
Councilwoman Fassinelli?
No.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes four to one.
Passes four to one. So we are going to our next hearing, which is declaration of vacating a portion of the street easement on the corner of Sycamore Circle and Santiago, Santiago Boulevard. Staff, please give the staff's report.
This item, again, has been raised in the past by the council and I believe it was discussed during the infrastructure tour in January. Akram, our city engineer is here to provide a staff report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, on April twenty-fifth, the city council approved the resolution to declare the intent to vacate a portion of a street easement at the corner of Sycamore Circle and Santiago Boulevard. You want to put the, and that's shown right, the portion of the landscape right at that Sycamore Circle was dedicated by the adjacent tracts as part of their approvals. The subject portion, it is dedicated part of the track one oh five twenty-three and the street easement, which area is about Mr. Rambo's property, approximately four thousand square feet.
This area right here, Akram, is that it?
That is correct. That's the, about the triangular portion. And you can see it on the next, and it's the shaded portion of the triangle which is shown right there at the intersection of Santiago Boulevard and Sycamore Circle. Okay, the intent of this public hearing is to hear from the public if there is any persons is in opposition to vacation. At the end of this public hearing, you know, if the city council determined that the easement is unnecessary, then we recommend the adoption of a resolution in order to vacate the easement to the adjacent property which is owned by Mr. Rambo. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Council members, do you have any questions with staff?
Akram, the only, the only question I had was, you know, the elevation in the two properties between the property owner and this particular, is there, I, I see a chance and a possibility for a significant amount of erosion into his property, into his pool in the event something happens, like we keep thinking a hundred-year rain's coming. You know, is it, are we going to require something to protect the city as well as his home?
Since we're going to be vacating it, that it becomes part of his property and it'll become his responsibility to maintain both sides of the property.
Right, I understand, okay.
Is anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the councils. Any further discussion with the council?
Well, I had, I had two concerned citizens call today about it, but no one's here to speak up about it. I, I think they were concerned about conveying this property and increasing the value of that, that homeowner's property without some offset, that type of thing. So there were, there were three people, one not living in that general area, but two others in that area, that had brought it up, that they were concerned about, you know, us just granting that to them, their property value going up and being more so compared to the, the neighbors that live close by, so just, but they're not here to speak for themselves.
We'll get more property taxes from that, right?
Well, I understand that.
But legally, legally, we can't. We cannot get any, we can't sell it to them.
Well, so this is a vacation process. Technically, it's already part of his property, right? He owns the fee title, he owns the underlying property, we just have an easement for right-of-way purposes. So the way... So the way you vacate, get rid of such property, if the city doesn't want to have any legal responsibility due to our ownership there, is that we vacate it back to him, and that's generally not a for cash consideration type of transaction under the code. Now, we can put conditions on the vacation, saying you can't do this, you can't, you know, build a wall, you can, you know, i- if the council wanted to, but this is fairly typical for these types of situations.
Unfortunately, they're not here to speak for themselves.
Steve, our city manager, at this point, this property serves no purpose to the city. It's except as a liability for maintenance and anything that may occur on that property?
Correct. So, we'll maintain it and spend effort out there at this point. In any development or anything you would have to do, would have to be compliant with the city codes, and you would have to come in with plans. You do not, have not received any plans at this point for any future development on it, so.
Would this, as was mentioned, this may enhance his property value, this, at this point in time, affect his property tax, would increase it all, suspect in the future, when he sells his property, you know, it'll sell for even more, and will realize more real estate, or property tax then, but would it affect it now?
I think you, yeah, I, I don't think it should. I don't think it's a, an assessable event, which triggers a Prop 13 reassessment, and also, in, in his title report, this square foot should already be listed as his.
Okay.
Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, you know, sometimes property records get funky, but it shouldn't do that.
I just wanted to add, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, this is similar to the issue that I raised, from a due diligence standpoint, that we weren't in some way, shape, or form unduly enriching, if I can momentarily waive attorney-client privilege. I raised the concern, just, just so that we have, our, our side of the street is clean, so that we potentially could head off the concerns of, of homeowners in the area, and if I understand, the research that you provided, and it was lengthy, we're on solid ground, and this should not be an issue.
Right, so state law specifically authorizes the vacation of property from tract maps, so because it's authorized by state law, it's by definition, under the California Constitution, not a gift of public funds, which is the relevant document. Plus numerous court cases have said disposing of real property, so we don't have to maintain it anymore, the public benefit is to reduce maintenance costs.
Exactly.
Reduce litigation potentiality from property ownership, that that is clearly also a public purpose, so it is not a gift. So the city does get a benefit, in your, in your policy decision, you decide to vacate from this transaction, it's not a gift of public fund.
Thank you for indulging me on that.
Is any further discussion, or do we have a motion on this issue?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Then moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, now we will consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine, and are usually enacted by one motion, approved the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item being removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to remove four, five, six, and 10.
I have some questions about six.
So you want to remove six as well?
Yes, sir.
Any, any other we want to remove? Anyone from staff or the public want to remove items from consent calendar? No ones, I have agenda items four, five, six, and 10 pulled from consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the balance of items?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, Steve, could you take roll?
Again, this is approval of items seven, eight, and nine that remain on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
I thank you. Now we'll take up the other items that were pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli.
I just have one warrant, I went over most of these. There's, the last one, it is check number 22870 for a small amount, $248.18. This check was payable to Mr. Tom Dodge. This apparently was for a CERT training course, and I would like it if maybe we can schedule Tom Dodge to come in and tell us about what that CERT training course was for, since I haven't seen anything on CERT for a while. So I know this was authorized by the city manager, which is wonderful, but if we could benefit from that and have, and report to the council what it was about, that would be great.
This was for Train the Trainer program, and was authorized by the former city interim city manager. We'll be happy to invite Mr. Dodge in to make a presentation.
Yeah, since he's a, he's a committee member now on the LEAT committee also, so it might be prudent to do that.
And could, could we once again remind Mr. Dodge that, hey, email addresses is, can get me two different ways, but I've yet to receive anything from, from the CERT. Again, I'm, my wife and I both are original members of the CERT team, you know, I was part of the whole training program and so forth from its conception, so I, I too would like to be involved in that process, but I haven't heard anything from Tom, so just encourage him, please.
I'm sure we all will. I think he was trying to get things back up and running, hence the Train the Trainer course, and he was going to reach out to the cadre of folks that might be interested in this.
Okay.
With that item, I move it.
I'd like to just go through all of them, and then we'll go through all of them.
Oh, the warrants, oh.
Yeah, you, go, go through each one, then we'll.
Oh, I'm done with item four. You want me to go, go on?
Go through five.
Okay, all right. Five and six to me are the same. I had a, a meeting with Michelle. What I did here is, since in the last year, we have, due to transparency issues, we have a lot of papers here, so what I did is I tried to follow the numbers, is what I did, and I was having a very difficult time following the numbers. And I'm going to give you an example. What we have here, and I can't give you, it's called the Treasurer's Report of Cash on Deposit and Invested. I don't know what page it is, so if, you can maybe tell the, the staff? Okay. All right. So what we have here is, it shows here, you know, your cash on deposit, your short-term investments, medium-term, long-term, certificate of deposits. Then kind of what follows is you have these bank statements. You have a Wells Fargo Bank statement, and it shows we have $798,000 in the bank, and that $798,000 doesn't show up anywhere on this. So how it, how you have to come to it is, I have to find which of the accounts are administered by Wells Fargo, and there's a little number four or doggo that tells me which one it is, which I can't read. The same thing goes with Union Bank, and so on. So what I'm requesting here is, this is great, but I need to be able to see where that $796,000 is, and this is so small that I can't read it, and I didn't know about it till you told me it, and some of these accounts, like there's a Union Bank account for $99,000, is not part of the Union Bank statement, it's separate, and I wouldn't know that until I sat down with you for an hour. So if we could have some sort of a summary sheet to tell us and match, so we can match up the bank statements, that would be wonderful.
I have a problem.
I appreciate it.
Is that five and six?
Yeah, I combined them together, but I know Robbie pulled it also, I'm not quite sure why.
How about 10?
Let me get to 10. All right. 10. I just want to congratulate Beth Riley and thank her for stepping up. Beth Riley's been a member of this community since she was a young girl. She actually lives, her and her husband live in the home that she was raised in, so she has been here a long time, and to have her join the community foundation is wonderful for us. She has a family, two young boys, and it is an asset to the city and an asset to the foundation, so I just wanted to congratulate her for stepping up and coming into the foundation.
Okay, now we'll take a vote on each pulled item. Item number four is pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli. We'll take a motion to approve that one.
Okay, uh, yeah. I thought you had an item.
So you're coming back to me?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
That's right, you did, you did say you wanted four. I thought she answered your question.
No, six.
You, you, but six, I'm sorry, six. No, go ahead with the six, we'll do that before we.
Michelle, I had some questions.
I'm not, I'm not bad.
No, 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 it's okay. I had some questions on the general fund. It, it looks like we're significantly underrunning on our maintenance cost. I mean, we've got, what, three or four months left in our year, we've got significant funds in there. Are we planning projects at the year-end that are going to eat up all of those funds? Or it just seems like we're way underspending, and I know we've got streets and sewers and all kinds of things that need repair, but we're, we're running 42% of our expenditure, so I was, not necessarily you, but maybe the staff, help me understand.
Sure.
Is that a, is that a reason?
Yeah, when we were talking about budget, remember how we had, we're doing TAF as our major street project this year? We were going to add another $280,000 worth of street maintenance, but as we talked in the budget, we are consolidating that into 1718 for economies of scale, so we're going to do like a two-year project, and that, that money's going to be just, it's already budgeted for street maintenance, it's going to be actually carried forward to next year, instead of spending $700,000, and we talked about spending the $900,000.
But the, the concern I have, or the question I have, is the things that were slated, we, we did the tour, identified areas that needed to be fixed, I'm assuming now, and are we delaying that? Because people are going to start asking, when are you going to come start making changes in our community and things like that with regards to road maintenance and, you know, that kind of stuff? Not, not necessarily a question for you, I'm, I'm asking.
No, and I think what we are moving forward on these projects, I think a lot of these decisions have just been made, so we're pulling forward into the budget, so I think I heard at the budget workshop, is try and get these things done, and there's a priority. So again, the others, the other side of it is, like Michelle says, we want to consolidate and get the best bang for our buck, so if we can do more as a two-year, we tried to pull those together, so for instance, an RFP might be more than just one project, but multiple projects. So we're trying to lump these in and consolidate, and I think that's sort of the practice that you see in other jurisdictions as well.
Well, let's just make sure we communicate that to the public, because we've told them all along, we've got, I mean, I remember Vince, you know, the, one of the first city council meetings talked about, you know, maintenance on the streets and things like that, and, you know, we've kind of gotten out there that we're, we're, you know, we took the road tour and everything else, and I just want to make sure that they don't feel left out because we're consolidating something in two-year plan, and they don't get their things taken care of, that's all, because they were under the mindset that they were on this schedule. I was also concerned about waiting till the end of the year and loading up a bunch of projects that we all couldn't manage at the same time. That was what's concerning me, because we were underrunning so much significantly on the monies.
The, I believe it was last council meeting, we gave you the, the quarterly capital report, and it was talking about how TAF, because that's where the high school is, that we were waiting till school got out in order to actually, you know, do that massive project, so it wouldn't interfere with the schooling.
No, I'm cool with that, yeah.
So that was, and that's $750,000.
Right.
So that's our major project this year.
Okay. I just, I think we, I think we owe it to the public to at least make them aware that these are the things that are going on, that we have plans to do things, and, you know, either on the website, or newsletter, or something to that effect, because it just, you know, people have expectations, and we want to make sure that we're meeting their expectations.
And that's a great point, and that's actually, you stole my thunder, in the community develop, community development public safety meeting, I mentioned that to Akram and Ray, that when the TAF project gets underway and the RFP is, is taken care of, that we notify the individual homeowners and have a, correct me if I'm wrong, the, what was a reoccurring conversation with our schools about how they might be affected, and I think it's perhaps, you know, a little new to, to how this budget process works, Robbie, but there's a little bit of a hangover from one council to the next, and they didn't have a lot planned for this particular part of the year, except for the TAF Avenue project. So there is, there are items in the works, and it's just going to be towards the end of the fiscal year, and then a whole lot next year, and then I share your concern. In fact, I double down that we need to get even more projects done, because we owe it to our residents to have much better streets, much better infrastructure, and if we don't start taking care of it now, we're going to wind up paying tenfold over what we should be paying for it.
I would add, on June 13th, we'll be doing our next budget workshop, and I think the direction we received last budget workshop was pretty much along those lines, so we'll be doing a much more active job of communicating on our projects, what you're looking for.
Bless you.
But Michelle and I will be coming forward with some budget recommendations that I think will address some of those, those directives that we received at our last budget workshop.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay, we'll start with item number four is pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli. Do I have a motion to approve that one?
Uh, yes, I make the motion.
Second. Moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Item four passes five zero.
Item number five pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli. Do I have a motion to approve that one?
I move up.
Move to second?
Second.
Moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Item number five passes.
Item number six pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli and Councilwoman Pitts.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Item number 10 pulled by Councilwoman Fastinelli. Do I have a motion to approve it?
I move.
Second. Moved in second, roll call.
Councilwoman Fastinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
I have just a recommendation on items pulled from the consent agenda. If you're pulling an item just because you have a question regarding it, and not a question you think that may be, that the general public has an interest in, it would be a lot more efficient if you just called up staff and asked a question, and not pulled the item from the consent calendar, because it makes the, it kind of slows down the meeting, would make it a lot more efficient if you did it that way. Also, I wanted to indicate, if you have a question of staff that you want to ask them in open session, please have the courtesy to call staff beforehand and give them a heads up that you're going to ask a question, so they'll have the answer prepared for you.
I'd just like to reiterate exactly what the mayor said. That, that is basic training, so to speak, for elected members, or I should say, elected officials in the state of California. One of the very first things that we're taught through the League of Cities, a nonpartisan leader in, in this type of training, is, is when you're pulling a number of very small things, it really breaks up the meeting, it's not fair to staff, these items can be handled in a routine manner beforehand. Obviously, if there's a significant concern, they can be brought up, but just to hear yourself talk, so to speak, is really not fair to staff, and we ought to give staff courtesy of a heads up on, on items, and give them the opportunity to resolve these before the meeting, so that we can get through the meeting.
Well, I have to say, I brought mine up and, and pulled it for a reason, for the community, it was not a me and my question necessarily.
That's what I'm saying, if it's something you think is interest to the community, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so I, I don't need to be lectured on the rules and so forth, but I pulled that for the community, because I've, ever since I started walking the streets, you know, pavements and storm drains and everything else has come up from many constituents around here, and if we're making changes, they ought to know it. That's all I'm saying.
I absolutely agree with you, I'm just talking about pulling a vast majority of these items. An item here or there is completely within what the training we had, but pulling minutia frankly is not.
Well, minutia is up to the council person, and when council people want to bring something to the attention of the public, this is the proper way to do it. And you are correct that they should ask the staff what the answers are, because you certainly want them to be prepared, which ninety-nine percent of the time is what I do. But the items that I pull, even something that might be a minutia, which is a small two-hundred-and-forty dollar check to a resident, who is now a member of a committee that we paid to go to a safety training, is important, because we have a council member who's asked several times to be updated on that. So the minutia is out of the equation at that point. So pulling from consent calendars, just to hear it yourself talk, is not something that's being done by this council. So if you're not interested in the items that I wanna bring to the public, you could just kindly sit back and listen. But I do know that the public likes to hear about certain things, and the way to hide things is in the consent calendar, so it's good to bring some stuff up.
Okay, we can go on to new business, and our first item of new business, annual approval of the statement of investment policy. Staff, do we have a staff report?
This is the annual adoption of the investment policy statement. Our finance director will give a presentation, we also have the chair of our investment advisory committee here. Yes, he's still here, so Michelle?
Thank you. Well, I gave you a breakout, there's a lot of, the staff report kind of bullets out every little change. The, it was a cleanup this year, we, we have a lot of, Vice Chair Lindoti did a great job, she asked if she could kind of revamp it, look through it, bring it in two thousand, I believe it was, nine? We did a revamp of, like, we took the investment policy and tore it up, but we also took it from Anaheim. So Lynn came, she goes, there's a lot of information in here, well, let's pull some out, let's reword it. So she did a ton of work, and I worked with her a little bit, and basically what you have before you is some simplification of what the policy is stated. We haven't changed what we're investing in, or what we're allowed to be invested in. It's making sure that paragraph eighteen is matching with paragraph one, and paragraph, you know, so it's, there's not a ton of changes. I did meet with Councilwoman Fasenelli, and she has a couple of items that she's welcome to bring up right now. But again, this was just a cleanup of working, and we got feedback from all of the IAC, and they pretty much agreed on all of it. One of the major changes that you will see is the, the pulling out of the glossary, and this is, because they're investment professionals, they're reading this like, oh, I know this like the back of my hand, and so that was something that they wanted to pull out. So that was probably the biggest chunk that was pulled out. Another large chunk that you, you may be wondering about is on page thirteen. And that is, we have some redundant, redundancy in the LEAF and OCAP are pools that we can invest in, and the government code addresses that. And so we pretty much had the government code in the investment policy, which we can just refer it to under the section. So that was another large chunk that was taken out. But for the most part, it was clarification, rewording some things, making sure everything matched up. So if you have some questions, and if Councilwoman Fasenelli wants to bring up her ideas that she's interested in, I'm, I'm here for questions.
Okay, I spent a good hour with Michelle to go over some of these items, because I didn't know why they were changed. And some of them I do wanna bring to the attention, because I would like some answers also, and I know that we have somebody here, we have the chairman, so we can get some answers from there. For the benefit of the public, the resolution that we did adopt in 2015 was that this committee exists in an advisory capacity to the city council to serve within assigned areas of responsibility for the purpose of gathering and studying information. And they will advise with respect to the city's investments and the investment portfolio. So this is an advisory committee, and they do a great job, we have great people there. So I'm gonna take this, let's see, a little bit by section. On the front page, which is page one of twenty-five, I know that you've asked for them to review this and bring it to us in May, which is now. But there were so many changes on this, I mean, I read this, I wish I had a magnifying glass, but I couldn't read some of it as is. But to have it be changed in May when it needs to go into our June budget is a lot. I mean, it's a lot of work, we only have one person to do all this work, that I would like it if we can move that where the IAC presents it to us sooner than May. Just because we're working with budgets, we're trying to go to print, that I don't think that there's enough time for us to review this. I mean, it took me several hours to review this, to even come with my questions, and here I'm at a council meeting, and I wanna see it again. I can't approve it till you give us a copy of it, so I don't, that's just one of the comments that I have, that I don't want it to go till May. I'd like to know, on, we're gonna take it, and Michelle, you can help me, because we did.
So are you, are you, when would you like?
Well, earlier in May, if it can come in April, that's fine too, but to, to come in May where we have changes, the next time it comes back to us in June.
I don't think that's a problem, I think we can bring it to the IAC.
Or whatever month you want, it's just coming in May.
They meet the third Wednesday after quarter end?
Yeah.
So that would be January.
However, it works with that.
So I think I can push it to the IAC meeting to address it in January.
It's just a lot to go over the budget and make changes here for us, so.
I had a question on the timing, when have we had this in the past? When's it been brought to the council in the past? Has it always been brought in May?
In May, the ninety percent of it has been in May. I remember one year, we, I think that was two thousand nine, when we made a ton of changes, we brought it in November. Twenty-eleven, we brought it in June.
June.
So he's saying ninety percent of the time is brought in May, so what's different this time?
Well, I read, okay, I don't know about the rest of you, but I took a long time to read this, I read every single change that she's put in here.
So, so did I.
Well, you know what, maybe you don't work or have a family, but it's a lot of work, and I wanted to ask questions about it, Bill. So how am I supposed to do that with the budget and have her change it and bring it back to us?
But I don't, I don't see how it's had anything to do with the budget.
It goes in the budget, it goes, it gets printed, doesn't it?
No, this isn't, this isn't part of the actual budget document?
No, but I thought, you said it was printed with the budget document.
No, it's, it's not part of the budget, this is, this is the investment policy.
I know what it is.
But it's not part of the budget.
Yeah, it's, it's not included in the budget, no, it's just an annual document that we do, and it's a lot of this time.
Either way, I, okay, regardless, either way, I think that more time is needed, so that it allows us the time to read it. And I'm gonna continue on here with everything, and then if you don't want it in April, and you continue to want it in May, then, then be so. But I'd like to go over the items that we have here, and we wanna know. So I'm gonna talk about the glossary, because there's a lot of areas in here that I didn't know what they were talking about. And the glossary is something that is needed for people who are not in the investment arena. I mean, I'm an accountant, but I still need to know what NOCS, let's see, is, I have no idea. NRSRO, NRSRO. I think having a glossary telling me what that is in the end is much simpler than me having to refer back to whatever page you did it in, so.
Mayor Protem requested that as well.
Glossary is just, it's very helpful, there's a lot of financial terms there that people who are in banking and investment work with all the time, but.
We all feel subject to that. With the desire of transparency, the clearer we can make the document in terms of providing glossaries and so forth, so that our, all of our residents can understand it the better.
Right.
That was my position during the investment advisory committee meeting.
It would, it would've been helpful.
So I'm sorry, but you agreed with me on that one.
That was a good thing. Now, a couple of years ago, as a council, I believe we decided not to have the committee file Form 700, which was a blessing to a lot of them. But if you go to page two of twenty-five and three of twenty-five, so page two of twenty-five, three point four, if you read that, it says, "All investment personnel required to do so shall comply with the reporting requirements of the FUPC and include an annual filing of a statement of economic interest." Then when you go to three of twenty-five, which is four point three, it says, "All individuals involved with the investment of funds or review of investment transactions will be required to report all goods and income." So I don't think you are intending on having them file a Form 700, but this document says that they have to.
Could, could I address that? In my opinion, the investment advisory committee does not make investment decisions, staff does that. So that's the reason, that, that's what they're saying, is people that make the investment, the actual investments are required to file.
Actually, it says, "Review of investment transactions."
On, on page three?
It does say, it's, it's clear.
On page three, I think we might need to take that out. On page three of four point three?
Yeah.
We did not take, like halfway, I think it's the second sentence, middle of the paragraph four point three. It says, "All individuals involved with the investment of city funds or review of investment transactions." So it could be misconstrued that the IAC reviews investment transactions? I mean, that, that was the, I think where she was bringing up the fact that.
Well, yeah, because throughout, it does say it reviews, that, that, that's, they're an advisory, they do review, they do review it. It says here that they gather and they study information in respect to the city's investments. So I know it's not their intention to file a Form 700, we removed that, so if that's consistent.
I can remove that, just the review portion, and if it makes it clearer.
Okay.
So that it, you know, eliminates the fact, because that was one of the issues that some people didn't wanna be involved in the investment advisory committee, because they had to file one. So that could just benefit the city.
My understanding, the idea of that section was, it was related to the people that actually do the investments. An investment advisory committee does not do an investment, they only advise the city council.
Right, but, and this says, if they advise, they have to file a Form 700, so.
Let's take the review part out then.
Had I not read it with the word, I wouldn't have found that, and I know that we do have people who don't wanna file that form. All right, let's move.
That was my mistake, I apologize.
Again, to the glossary, I'm gonna move to page five of twenty-five, and it's nine point five. I wanted to know what a qualified institution was, and I think that if we have a glossary, that that, will that define what a qualified institution is? Okay. All right. We were able to go over, okay, here. Why are we referring to NRSRO, and who are they? Are they Moody's, are they Standard and Poor, are they Wells Fargo? Who is NRSRO?
That, it is Moody's and Standard and Poor, that was, again, it's investment terminology that advisors are used to seeing.
So if we're looking at Moody's, we should write Moody's, we should write Moody's, or we should write Standard and Poor's though, because which one are we looking at, or if we're looking at both? Because this is, this is kinda.
It's, it's any rating agency.
It's general, it's not one or the other, it's all the above.
But, so how are we gonna know who you're looking at? In the past, we've only looked at Moody's and Standard and Poor's, so are we looking at anyone else? Why are we going generic?
It, I mean, they're nationally recognized, it is, it was.
And what makes a nationally recognized, do you see where I'm going? We've always gone specific, and now we're going broad, and I don't understand, in a time where financial institutions, you, you wouldn't go broad. So I don't know why.
Since the financial crisis of oh eight, there was substantial change in the nature of those agencies and the regulations pertaining there too. There were a lot of lawsuits against them, because people alleged they, they gave fraudulent ratings in order to get deals done, to get paid. So I think limiting it to specific entities with corporate reorganization, which may not exist next year, I think you, within the standard I'm familiar with on bond transactions, that is the standard terminology. And I forget if they're licensed or how they're regulated, but there is some regulatory framework, I think, in FINRA, which I forget, which is another acronym.
Were you that on the glossary?
Which was established after the meltdown to deal with some of this stuff, so.
And that makes sense, it's a big change for us though, to see, you know, I mean, we're, we've always had a name in there.
But it isn't just Moody's, there's Fitch's, there's.
There's more, but when I asked what it was, I was told Standard and Poor's and Moody's, so that's why. So at least put that in the glossary, so we have an idea then, and I guess when they advise us, we'll know who they looked, who they looked at.
Right.
All right. Let's go to thirteen, page thirteen of twenty-five, and let's see, it's twelve of twenty-five and thirteen of twenty-five. In here, the word surplus was removed under eleven point one five, and it was changed to eligible investments. But then on fifteen point one, surplus is back. So we've used surplus on page thirteen a couple of times, instead of eligible, but we've used the word eligible on twelve.
It's, that again, there was, there was a lot of changes, and so we can, we can.
I mean, eligible is great, but is it surplus or is it eligible? So I would assume it would be changed to eligible?
I, yes, I, that was my recommendation.
Okay, so, all right, so that, you know where that is, right? Okay. I'm gonna go to reporting on sixteen point zero, which is on page fourteen. "The city treasurer shall render a monthly report to the city council, city manager, and investment advisory committee within thirty days." The city treasurer reports to the city council and the city manager, I don't believe they report to an advisory committee. So I think they get their information from when it's agendized, so being an advisory committee, when, they would get it with their packet.
The, yeah, the investment advisory committee is, is welcome to get it, I mean, on a monthly basis, because it's part of the, the monthly agenda. However, at the quarterly meetings that we have, I give them the quarterly, the quarterly investment reports, which have already gone to council, so.
Right, but it's not a function of the city treasurer to report to them on a monthly basis?
Not on, not on a monthly basis per se. He does do a semi-annual report on the interest on the investments, but he, I mean, and he's part of the meeting and talks about the investments.
Okay. On seventeen, it says, "The finance director, city treasurer, and investment advisory committee shall review the policy annually." And the, is he finance, city treasurer and investment shall consider relevance to current law. What's happening, what I'm reading here is that the treasurer is reporting to the committee first, before they're reporting to, to council. So unless I'm reading it incorrectly, that's what it's looking on. I wanna just keep the roles clean as to an advisory committee and to the treasurer reporting to the city.
Okay, I believe that's, we were, we were discussing this about, once we bring the policy, like today, bringing the policy to council, we could add at the end of that sentence and make an annual recommendation to the city council.
Right, that would be something that, that's how it would work.
And then in light of that, the next sentence says, "The finance director, city treasurer, and investment advisory committee shall consider relevance to the current law, financial and economic trends, cash flows, needs to the city of Villa Park." At the beginning of that sentence, we could add, "In concurrence with their review."
Okay.
They're looking at the state laws and all that.
And the last is on page fifteen, it says here that certain types of certificates or securities may be pursuant to the section unless the treasurer, the mayor, or the city manager certifies in writing a such investment. There's a couple places here, also on section two, that it provides the mayor with, I don't believe, duties that he has. And Todd, I'm gonna refer to you, to you here, it's the mayor, the city manager, or designee. And in the past, the mayor hasn't had that authority, so it might just be a word that we've, it's always been here, and we haven't caught that. But this is separating that the mayor has the authority on his own.
Well, if you adopt a policy, which gives the mayor that authority, you have that authority.
I don't think it says that though.
I, no, it says that, and the mayor here, you know, not being an elected official, has not had any more authority than the council.
And all defense of it, I don't think this has ever happened, so, I mean, the sentence says, "Certain types of security, or certificates or securities may be made pursuant to the section unless," and then the treasurer, or the mayor, or the city manager certifies in writing that such investment is in the best interest of the city by protecting its financial position.
It should be the city council though, it's not, I mean, the mayor unilaterally wouldn't be able to make that decision, that's why we have a council of five people.
Well, no, well legally, the mayor can make that decision, if you delegate him that authority.
If we delegate it.
I think this does, from what I read, but that's a policy decision, you do whatever you want.
Well, like I said, I read it, I read it with a fine tooth comb, and I probably missed a lot, and it's something I wanna bring up. It's not something that I think that any of us knew was there, otherwise we would've caught it before. I don't, I think that word mayor should be city council, that's why we have a five-person council here.
Is that a change, or has that been in the previous policy?
It was in the previous.
That was in the previous policy.
It's been in the previous policy for, what, eight years?
Right, it could've been there longer, I don't know. But yeah, it's, it's, all right, 'cause you're saying from the Anaheim, is that what you're saying? Yeah, probably.
You know, but the other words were in there eight years, and that's why Lynn Doty changed them, so we're looking at changing. Lynn made changes, and we're looking at some changes too. I don't think that the mayor should have, any mayor should have that, that's a safety, that's a safety procedure for the city, that's why we have a council. You know, there, it, it's something that I don't believe that we intended on it being there, and it just has not been caught yet, that's all. Nobody likes to read these documents, they're boring, except, I know, Bill, you do, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. So, no, that's, those are my changes, along with the glossary, but, and in case anyone thinks that's minutia, my hours and the hour with staff is not minutia, so this is the money, so we wanna make sure that it's run right. So I would like to make the change in the page fifteen to remove the word mayor and put city council in there. And the other stuff, Michelle, you.
Okay, sorry, I have made the, the changes accordingly, with the glossary.
I might suggest, for purposes of clarification, if we're gonna make some changes, we, instead of making them on the dais on the fly, where we might not have followed them, that we come back in June with a clean version of what would be recommended.
That would be wonderful.
And then we can simply adopt, if they are in agreement with the policy change recommended. But I would caution that the wording today that we word smith here might be sort of.
I would, I would agree. I think, I think we should bring it back next month.
I would concur with that.
It's a very detailed document, so, I mean, we're going to need to read it again.
So, I think what we, the input we received, Michelle, do you have?
I have one question. The rest of the issues, do we want to say okay to them, and then we can have a smaller redline version, or do we want the whole enchilada?
We went over some other grammatical stuff that, that I think you're going to, I'm not going to go over that.
I would, I would suggest that we come back in the next version, that we have the redline version, but we also put, like, a blue liner, a blue copy of the third, of any changes we made today. So, you would know what was changed, and any changes from forward. For purpose of clarity, I hate to have a document that you have multiple versions, and say, well, that was the last redline version, this is a new redline version. It just gets more complicated, and then we just lose a lot of continuity. So, I would, I would suggest that we'll come back, and in some way to either highlight it, or some way differently, so the next version, it'll be clear of the discussion we've had this evening.
I appreciate the work that IAC did, and Mr. Doty's not here, thank her very much, because I know she did a lot of this herself, upon advice of them, but it was a lot of work.
Is that being in order to make any comments, public comments?
Yes, public comments, sure.
I basically, I basically agree, as chair of the investment advisory committee, with the things you've talked about here today. In terms of timing, I didn't quite understand, I, do we meet in January, is that our last? We meet in January, we meet quarterly, just four times a year, so that hamper's us in getting back to you quickly. So, we could then, is the timing, would the timing allow us to meet, to deliver this in March? So, we could deliver this first version into March.
That would, that would be one of our...
We'll just start our work in, prior to January, we'll start our work in September. So, we'll start our work in September for the June document, to be ready in January to give it to you, and then we'll be able to do a turnaround in March, then we meet again in April, correct? Then we meet again in April, we'd have that turnaround back, basically ready for you in June, if that's acceptable.
I appreciate that, thank you. It's a lot of work on, on your end, Ben, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, the least changes, we found in the past, the least changes we make, the more acceptable it is to you. But however, in 2009, we had two to three pages total, total, made it easy document. One of the members is a good friend of the treasurer of Anaheim, and we modeled the new assignment about, new policy, about 35 pages, based on Anaheim's document, a much more complicated city than Villa Park, for sure. But we wanted to give ourselves flexibility. Since that time, 2009, it's been my goal to simplify that thing down, and each time we try to major simplify and delete, we get some feedback from, whether you guys are the council, or previous councils as well. But we think it's still worthwhile doing. The glossary, regrettably, I can't speak too well to that, because I was on the losing end of that vote. And, but to represent the other, the majority side, their comment was, you can, Google is a new glossary. You just Google that name, and you will find out all of this information. I personally like to have it only in one place, and to have that, and said, a lot of people don't approach it that way. However, we will, we will, we will feed that back to the committee. Three, I agree with 4.3, we've constantly wrestled with, it's not whether we want to file an investment report, we were told by legal staff at one point, that we, because we weren't making investment decisions, we didn't need to file that.
Yeah, that's correct, and just to clarify for the record, with your permission, Mayor, I mean, under state law, certain people, city managers, city attorney, city treasurer, finance director, have to file. Beyond that, there's a category of people the city can request that file, because you have your own conflict of interest policy. It's my opinion that because the investment advisory committee doesn't make final determinations as to such investments, they are not required to file, and hence, what we talked about. And it is, in real-world experience, a detriment to people willing to serve, because you don't want to have to put all your finances out there unless you have to. You know, people like me, I have to, because I'm a city attorney, but that was the theory behind it, and it's completely in accord with state law. It's not like we're trying to hide anything, that's the reason why we're just done that way.
I saw the budget and finance committee when I recommended that you guys not file one, because it was an issue, but I want to make sure that this document says you don't have to.
So, in the past, we've had two candidates turn us down, when they found out they had to file that, for good and valid reasons. I found out later, I filed it as a grand juror, and it went into the state. I found out now, it only went to the city, city hall, it never went past city hall when we filed it in previously as an investment advisory committee. So, we like that, but it's not because, we're not doing it because we like or dislike, it's because we said we're not required to, because the city council then required it. Okay. Qualified institutions, that will come back with the glossary. We don't get any financial reports from Dennis, or the city treasurer, monthly. We only get it quarterly. When we walk to that meeting, as part of the meeting agenda, as you stated, that's when we get three reports, three monthly reports together, and that's the time we see Dennis's report. So, you guys have already approved and reviewed at least two out of three, and then maybe all of them. The treasurer sits on the investment advisory committee, certainly doesn't report to us at all. If you know Dennis, you would understand that even better. The mayor power is way above my pay grade, that's what you all decide. However, I'm sure the way it got in there was, with the tendency modeled on Anaheim, Anaheim mayor is an elected official, has that power to invest about being that. And I think that's it. So, we will, I don't know if it's required that we have to look this over, it says on document that we would look over the annual report, whether we have to go back to that process, or whether we need to hold a special meeting, or just ignore it. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, for what you did.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, I'm right on that. My business life, I attended and held many staff meetings and board meetings, and I love coming to these council meetings, but I find that many of the questions are asked that are basic questions that have already been discussed with the staff and clarified. And it's, I've had a lot of people comment that says, they're not going anymore, because there's so many questions asked. Now, I do not mean to direct it towards anyone, but I think we all know that there's many questions asked tonight. I've dragged this meeting out, that we could have accomplished a lot of things, and I agree with you, Bill, there should be elementary questions that's asked the staff and clarified before we spend all this time going through it. So, it's just a comment that would expedite and accomplish, I think, what you would like, get the whole meeting done and have it through. But we had a lot of questions, just elementary, that should have been asked before this council meeting.
Thank you. So, I gather it's the consent of the council that we will bring this back next, next month?
I'd like to make a comment, that the questions weren't asked, we could not approve the document. I cannot authorize, Michelle, to make changes to an investment policy without bringing it to council, because you wouldn't have known she changed it. So, if those changes were made privately between her and I, you would have not known. So, unfortunately, that minutia has to be discussed, I don't have the power to change it by myself. So, that's the reason the changes have to be made. When you're not, when all of us are not provided with it, or we're not on the committee, that's, that's how it has to get done.
Well, is it the consent of the council that you want to bring it back next month?
Yes.
Is that okay?
If the staff can, the staff can do that.
Let's, let's move on, and bring it back next month, then. We'll go now to new business, the next item of new business award, contract for the Taft Avenue Rehabilitation Project.
Taft Avenue Rehabilitation, as you recall it, is our, one of our largest rehabilitation projects. We went out to bid, as we previously reported. The bids were open May 8, and the results are recommended here. Akram can go through any discussion. I would like to say that after the bid award is made, we do intend in early June to have a town hall with the community, for those people who might be affected, or might be interested. We'll have an ability to come and find out the timing, the implications, and any minor or major alterations they might want to make to their regular driving pattern, we'll let them know. So, we'll be doing that in early. So, this is the recommendation of, it's low bid, it's a public works contract, so it's low bid, we're using a standard contract.
Yes, and we received seven bids, and the lowest bidder is the Benz Asphalt, and for $512,000 plus, and we're recommending to, to the city council to approve the plans, and also to over the contract to Benz Asphalt for that amount. This is a federally project, funded project, so we will be getting a, a construction management in order to inspect and manage the project itself, and also to, a, conduct a labor compliance requirement that is part of the federal requirements. So, with that, I'm ready to ask, answer any questions you have.
I think you answered the one I had about the construction management.
Any other questions from council? If not, is anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Not, I'll bring it back to the council, any further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
So, moved.
Then moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Okay, just also want to make it clear that the construction management will not be civil source, so for the record, I wanted that to be clear.
You get a vacation.
Okay, roll call, then.
Councilwoman Bassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Pass this 5-0.
Our next new business item, it's the Fourth Amendment to the Urban County Corporation Agreement between the County of Orange and the City of Villa Park for fiscal years 2018, 19, 1920, and 2021. Please give the staff report.
This is a fairly routine matter, we're, as an eligible, we have a Villa Park, as a city, is eligible to participate, because we have a population of 50,000. We have, are eligible to receive CDPT money, which is Community Development Grant. This is basically, we don't typically receive it, because we don't have a qualifying number of homeowners at that level. So, we are eligible potentially for any disadvantaged populations that we could identify, but the funds would have to be spent exclusively for disadvantaged, or majority use. So, what this does is allows us to participate in the process, should that, should that potential develop. It is a no-cost item, but it does allow us to participate and potentially have a say in, but, and should monies become available, it sort of keeps the door open. So, we're recommending that we approve it, and this is the agreement consistent with past policy of the council.
Council members, any questions to staff? If not, any members of the public would like to speak on this item? Not, I'll bring it back to the council, any discussion? Do I hear a motion on this item?
So, moved.
Then moved, second?
Second.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Pass this 5-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, would it be possible to bring agenda item 17 up next? We've got some gentlemen in the back of the room that I'm fairly certain have had a long day, and if the council has any questions, or the public has any questions about this matter, I think it would be in all of our interest to, to move that along for them.
That's okay with the rest of the council?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, we'll, next one will be, new business is a consideration of fiscal year 2017, 18, recommended level of service, and Fourth Amendment to the Five-Year Agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the Orange County Sheriff, Coroner. Staff, please give a staff report.
This is, I'm very pleased to recommend the contract renewal. We receive excellent services from the sheriff's department, we're really proud of our partnership, and we believe we have the best staff and public safety staff around. With that in mind, the contract maintains the current staffing level. It's approximately a 2.9% increase, which we believe is very, very reasonable, given potential, you know, CPI increases and things along those lines. It also does, this time, we're including the directed enforcement and the community school resource officer in the contract. In the past, they had always existed, but not as part of the main contract. So, we're including them as part of the same this year. So, if you look at the total contract, it would look like a very large increase, but in reality, we're only seeing a 2.9% increase for them. We're, we're very much appreciative of the efforts of the sheriff, and I would hardly recommend approval tonight.
Council members, do you have any questions to staff? Is anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council, is any discussion, or do I hear a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Been moved, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bassinelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Pass this 5-0.
Thank you. Next item of new business is the 2013, 2021 Housing Element. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the, you'll recall that we've just received notice, and it seems like we just finished, and now we're just starting all over again. This, we received notice in March of the prior approval, and in, I believe it's, I want to say October 15, our next, our next update is due. Ray, our planning manager, is here to give a sort of a brief overview.
So, this past December, as Steve mentioned, the city council adopted the 2013, 2021 Housing Element Update, which was transmitted and subsequently approved or certified by HCD, the Housing and Community Development of the State. And since Villa Park did not adopt the Housing Element by the statutory deadline, the city must review and adopt the, the new Housing Element Update no later than October 15 of this year, in order to remain in compliance with the state law. Due to the limited staffing and the specialized knowledge required to do this, city staff is proposing to retain the services of JH Douglas and Associates, provide technical assistance to prepare the next update. It is permitted, the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with H, JH Douglas and Associates for the preparation of the 2017 Housing Element Update in the amount of $13,370, and authorize JH Douglas and Associates to proceed with the preparation of the 2017 Housing Element Update. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
Council members, do you have any questions?
What changes are there that we have to address? Is this something that we could just re-submit what we just submitted, and change the date on the submittal, and...
Right now, and it's a good thing, right now, the city is in compliance with state housing law. We're not on any bad list now for being out of compliance, and it's important to maintain the, the local control of land use and defending against any legal challenges. So, it's really important to be in compliance, so to stay in compliance with state housing law, we need to go through the review and the exercise of looking at any changes between now and the, the date that we need to adopt this, any changes. And more importantly, we, during the review period, we need to focus on demonstrating good faith effort, committed to, you know, facilitate housing development in the town center, and fairly just communicating and notifying housing developers of the opportunity to build homes in the city. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
I would add, too, we need to do some public hearings, as a public outreach effort, that's required by law.
Okay.
So, there's a requirement that there's, so there's three bills in, three public hearings, and it's a due diligence sort of thing with them, and I believe that's sort of the case. So, you will see, too, that the cost is down significantly from the 26,000, it's down less than half. And I will say, too, that the recent contract, we just got noticed, that the 20, I want to say 26,000, we, we're, 3,000 underneath, or 3,200, so they underspent, alas. So, we're very optimistic that we can live within even lower than the 13,000. So, you'll see a much diminished, page three of the proposal includes a description of the, basically, the hours involved, and there is a lot of, but it's a lot of going back through the detail, contacting the public, doing the due diligence, and showing good faith effort.
Okay.
And if I can add, it's already included in the budget that we already discussed last, at our budget study session, so that's already...
We built in these amounts.
We built in a dollar amount to cover this, so just in case.
Did we go through this process last year to get the, you know, the public hearings and everything else, to get the plan that we submitted approved, and we just missed the deadline?
We went through that process for about a decade.
Yeah.
Given the unique challenges of Villa Park and our ability to provide affordable housing as required by state mandates, we had those years ago, we kept resubmitting, we tried different options to try to comply, and it kept getting rejected. So it came back and back and back. So no, we did, we have those hearings last year? No. Did we have them during the time period of the adoption? Yes. Took so long, we're in now the next cycle, which is either seven years, five years, four years, depending upon when you approved the last one. So that's why it seems like it's rolling upon it, upon itself.
So we don't anticipate, you said something about anticipating changes. We don't anticipate change of venue or anything else that we're just dusting this off basically and making sure that there are no regulatory changes that are, would affect what we've already gotten approved?
I think for the purpose of the record, we want to demonstrate a good faith in complying with state law, and I think that would be our recommendation. And I, I wouldn't want to characterize it as dusting anything off, because I think the state would probably crown on that, and they have in the past. What we really want to say is we're going to comply.
Yet they approved it.
With state law.
So you're saying this is cheap insurance?
Mandated cheap insurance. Like car insurance.
But I, I don't want to put the community through a whole bunch of changes from the standpoint of changing what we've already approved in terms of the locations and things like that.
That's not required or anything like that, but we do have to check back with that community. So we do have to go through the process again, so it's, unfortunately, many times, and having dealt with the state, you know, they sort of require these processes, they're somewhat bureaucratic, and we, we have to comply.
Okay.
They have sanctioning ability, and we certainly don't want to mess with that side of the equation.
Because I've been hearing rumors that there are other, other things being tossed around to, to move from here to other areas that aren't very pleasing. So I just want to make sure we're not, that's not our intent with this, that we're spending the $13,000 to be compliant and to get this done the right way so that we get it approved.
I, I would say that, obviously, the council has any authority to do whatever they want to. Our intent is to comply with state law.
Okay.
Yeah, comply with state law in, in a manner which is going to be least impactful to the city and residents.
Well, just make sure that, that any plans that we have, we're well in advance of, of any thought process that we get that out there as well, because the things I've heard are not ple- pleasing. So I'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions from the council?
Well, I, I want to make sure that the, I know that discussion, Councilman Colacott has had discussions with Suronawater regarding annexing some land by the dam to put affordable housing, and I want to make sure that if people are hearing those rumors, that that's an individual council member who's had those discussions is not a council decision or a council discussion, and certainly not one that I would support, but we're always allowed to speak with other people. But annexing land that other people own to put affordable housing next door to $2 million homes is just not something that I don't think people, our residents are not going to be pleased with that. So that's the rumor that's going around, just to make sure that we fully understand that it's not a council rumor, that this council collectively has not made that decision or discussed that.
Well, of course, any annexation by the City of Villa Park requires a full vote of the city and public hearings, so.
Right, but let's think, make sure our residents are all aware, and you've got people who own two and a half million dollar homes, and you want to annex property that's not ours, doesn't belong to the city, and you want to put low-income housing behind their homes. You know, I don't think that's going to sit very well.
Well, I'd like to move on on this housing element issue. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Is any further discussion on housing element, a contract? If not, I'll take a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Could we have a roll call vote?
Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Pass this five zero.
Our next item of new business is purchase of business licensing software.
Item 15 and item 16, I'm pleased to, to come to the council. These are, these are initiatives I've heard since I came here from the council to sort of automate and bring the, the city up to a more automated version. Right now, if you come in any day, given day, we are dealing in a very antiquated system of manual transactions for business licenses, so people physically have to come into the office, and I get phone calls on a sort of regular basis, like, do I really have to come down there and do this? You do at this point, but we are going to fix that with our business licensing software. So we took bids from three proposals, the, came back, and we recommend a firm, CitizenServe, and they will cost $6,400 for initial implementation and an ongoing fee of $1,800. I will share, for instance, an example. Right now, if we got a public records request, which I get pretty much on a regular basis for all the business licenses in our city, that's a manual compilation, and it takes us time to literally go through those and, and peel them out and et cetera. So it takes time for staff to do that, which is sort of, I would say, something we need to go past, and we need to go to a much more advanced level. So I think this will be something very well received, and it's very much appreciated the council gave this directive initiative when I came forward, so I've been pleased to move forward on it.
Council members, you have any questions to staff?
I'll do it.
Okay. Does anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue? Not, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a motion on it.
I move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Could we have a roll call?
Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. The next item is a related item in a new business, is website upgrade and redesign.
Secondarily, like I mentioned, the other issue is our website. People actually go to other alternative vehicles to get information, which is unfortunate, and that's not a really good thing, and not that it isn't good to get other sources, but it would be nice if the city was able to be much more proactive in providing information, have an interactive website, have links to things that, you know, that we can do. For instance, our current software does not even allow us to show videos and audio recordings and whatnot. So it's a very difficult system that we have, which at the time was probably excellent, so I don't, so I don't want to comment on, on the quality of the time, it was probably a good, but we are now into a very good era where we can do a lot of technologically advanced things. So we had Kim, give Kim credit, who did a lot of work on this one and the business license to sort of ferret out good proposals. We talked to a number of cities, she looked at cities and what other cities are doing, and there are some excellent models out there. So we basically are ending up, as it turns out, the City of Brea is, their IT services, they do a number of services, so they'll do it with, they contract out with services, IT services for Stanton, I want to say a number of other cities in the LA area, but I don't recall where, but they would be the ones that we came up with as a bid, $6,100. And then there's a, a monthly $50 hosting fee, which I would say is a very, very reasonable price.
That's cheap if you put it on the cloud.
And it's, it's a great way to go forward, and I think it's going to be well, very well received. Again, the council's leadership on this has been very much appreciated, and I think we'll, we'll take a big step forward here. So I'm recommending.
Okay. Council members, you have any questions?
So moved.
Do you have any questions? No questions? I had one. I understand you'd be able to take online payments as well with this?
Yes.
Which is really a major step forward.
Right.
Anyone in the public like to speak on this item? Not, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion? I'll take a motion on the item.
So moved. You want to move it? I'll second it.
Moved in second. Roll call please.
Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Next, we'll skip 17 that we've completed, we'll go on to 18. The next item of new business is approval of one-year contract extension with Lily Planning Group for the provision of planning services.
This is the approval of a contract with Lily Planning Group. They currently serve approximately 12 hours a week, we receive, plus additional costs, any meetings they attend or whatnot. We entered into our second three-year agreement, I want to say expires in June 30th of this year, so we're coming to the, you will note in here that the, the rate is a significant increase, so I want to be very transparent about that. The Lily Group has told us that they feel their rates are, have been in the past very, 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 very competitive. They've given us a very good deal, and they have provided a rate sheet. I took the liberty of myself, starting to check around and look at the number of the other cities and whatnot, and to see what their rates were for some of these associate planners and things like that. So we are in a reasonable rate, but it's, it's a little bit, I would say, high in some areas, and, but it depends on what these duties are. So I would ask that the council approve an agreement for one year, and at that time, allow me six months to go out and look and see if we're doing a good competitive, you know, model. I can't tell you what an RFP is, but in January, I could tell you if we should probably look at an RFP or not. At this point, I would say, again, it's, it's, we, there's a continuity reason, we don't have Plan B option right in front of you, so I can't say, well, if you don't approve this, I have Plan E. And there's a lot of continuity of what goes on. However, I think it merits a lot of review, and I think, I think we should do that as a due diligence process. So my recommendation is a one-year, but secondarily, that I'd be directed to come back by January 1st with a recommendation of whether or not we do an RFP, and that would be a, more of a in-depth review of the kinds of services, and, and consultation with Lily, and be fair enough to them, because they have been very good to us in some ways. But, but I do want to be very candid and transparent about this whole process. So again, I would recommend approval.
Council members, any questions to staff? Then does the public want to speak on this issue? No one from the public? I'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll take a motion on it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call please.
Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Next, we'll go to old business. The first item of old business is Amendment to the City Council Communication Policy. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is a, subsequent to the last council meeting, in which the direction was to come back with a policy, which we had at that time, was that we, the county, I mean, the city would reimburse council members $1,000. And there was a discussion, why doesn't the city just issue us the thing and take out the reimbursement? Because people might be investing more than that amount. So this policy changes that, it goes back to the, city will be issuing electronic devices, and those will be returned upon the person leaving office. So that policy reflects the council direction from last council meeting.
Council, any questions to staff? If not, is anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any discussion, or do I hear a motion on this item?
Now, I just want to clarify, for Councilman Colacott, Nelson, and myself, that we're reimbursed $1,000. These electronic devices, are they property of the city or are they property of ours? Because it was our understanding they were property of ours, because we bought them.
My interpretation is it's going forward.
It's going forward.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I just want to make.
Wouldn't be retroactive.
I just want to make it a clarification. These are ours, we bought them, we reimbursed them, and they don't come back, okay?
That's good clarification, thank you.
Going forward, yeah, so the, the phones that were provided to us, we're going to return back to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I understand that you said these are our property rather than the city property?
No, they're city property.
City property.
The previous, if you had reimbursed at that point, that, that wouldn't affect those. Those are. Right, going forward, that's correct. This goes forward, anything that's issued to people is city property.
But the, but ones that made reimbursement for is also city property, isn't it?
No, that's not how it was, that's not our understanding at the time, because we could have bought whatever we wanted, but the city only provided us with the $1,000 reimbursement.
The city would provide up to $1,000 with, so they could have bought a $5,000 computer if they were so inclined.
Right.
But the city would only cap the amount of reimbursement to $1,000. So since that, you know, those are, people bought on individual preferences, they aren't any sort of universal specs, they aren't sort of something we decided that, that's moving forward, the best policy is to say, sort of the grandfather provision, if you will, if you had them, they're, you're, you were reimbursed under that policy. This is a discretionary policy of the council, so the council has that ability to make that decision. So we're recommending going forward.
I'm, I'm still not clear. If you, if you had one in the past, you paid more than $1,000 for it, you reimbursed $1,000, does it belong to the person or to the city?
The person.
Belongs to the person?
Yes.
So even if you were reimbursed only $1,000, it's still yours?
Yes.
Correct.
But going forward, they're going to hand you a lot of time.
Forward, they're going to hand you one, and it's the city's.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clear.
I'm sorry.
Be clear on that, that's all.
Yes.
I want to, I, I'd clear, because I, I know Councilman Fasenelli said she paid more than $1,000 for hers.
Yeah, so, yeah, and that's why I wanted to.
And I wanted to understand what happened with hers at the end of her turn.
Yeah, good clarification.
All right. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion on item?
I move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call.
Councilman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Our last item of old business is Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Damage Update.
This is, this is a very, very time-consuming issue for staff. I think a number of us are involved. We have met with FEMA at least two or three times in person, and I don't, umpteen times on phone calls. We have a site inspector actually coming out, an engineer coming out tomorrow to look at the site, but at this point, we've actually received some clarification that's been very useful. For instance, and I think I've mentioned to you, and I would like to report this, FEMA will reimburse us in a like-for-like basis. In other words, they will restore to exactly what we had. That doesn't preclude us from not doing something different. So if we want to do something different, there are, there are two options, if you will. One is that's totally our obligation, we assume the delta, they'll, they'll reimburse us up to X level, anything above that would be ours, our responsibility. Secondarily, we could make the argument, they would have to approve it in advance, that that mitigation effort is in fact the best engineering solution to it, and I sort of get that, they sort of give you the sort of wink, wink, like that doesn't happen very often. And, but you're free to do that if you want. If you want to make the recommendation that you spend, say, instead of the $700,000, we recommended that if we spent $900,000, that it would mitigate and be the best solution, recommended that if we spent $900,000, that it would mitigate and be the best solution, they may say, "You're fine doing that, but we're not going to reimburse you above that." So, they have been very clear, their base level of funding is corrugated metal, corrugated metal replacement, like-for-like, and that's what they're coming out for. They've also made it very clear that they will not reimburse for private property, any damage on private property for private-owned things. Now, the storm drain is not private property, because that was our issue. So, that's sort of where we have to draw the line, and we're going to be working a lot with them, what constitutes damage done by our property versus their property, and things like that. So, there'll be a lot more discussions, it's a long way off. What we are recommending at this point is, we're recommending going forward with an RFP process for the design phase of that. So we have gotten clarity, and they want us to go out to bid, so even if we were to go to the County Flood Control, they would have to compete in the bid process. We're not able to give an exclusive contract to anybody under FEMA's rules. So with that being said, we've asked, we're planning on an RFP process that would do two things. One, give us that baseline, which would be like-for-like comparisons, so we would know what that would cost. Secondarily, we want them to look and see what, any alternative that would constitute a best-practice replacement. So if they came back to us and said, you know, "Look, soils or whatever, we recommend, you don't do that, you do something else, and here's the difference," we would have that design element and estimate as well. I think that's what we're recommending at this point. Afrem, do you want to add anything there? Am I on track?
The RFP is, will, to acquire a qualified consultant or engineering firm, that will, also the design would be per the Orange County man, a hydrology manual, and also would be, you know, the whole RFP and the acquiring, the consultant is per the federal procurement requirements. So that is, will be, you know, will be following the, their procedures.
Councilmember?
Questions?
Any questions of staff?
My understanding is, one of our objectives that we'd like to look into is, you know, if we designed this, if we developed this according to Orange County Flood Control District standards, if it might be possible for us, that, you know, if we pay the extra amount, could we then transfer this facility over to them and get out of the flood control business?
That's, I, that's been clear, been brought up before. Again, so the, and I think Afrem mentioned it, anything would have to be, any design would have to be compliant with the Orange County Flood Control Design Manual. So no matter what, we'll be in compliance with their design manual. The secondary question is, would they be willing, if we did something else, to take that off our hands? And that will probably depend on the design that we choose, any issues that might be involved, and probably any financial implications there might be for them as the recipient. But yes, I, I, we've got that discussion on, sort of, down the road, having discussions with them.
Okay. Does anyone here from the public like to comment on this item? Not, I'll bring it back to the council. Do you have any further discussion, or do I have a motion on this item?
I'll go ahead and move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, roll call.
Councilman Fasenelli.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Colacott.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Next, we have the city manager report. Now we would discuss the city manager's report.
City manager report, as we started last month, will be, reflect a matrix that I provided. It, it is growing, but it is red, anything changes from the last meeting, so you'll be able to see any highlighting changes, and you'll see changes in status as well, reflected on those items. So, my staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question on item 35, because we just recently, we just brought it up, not even 15 minutes ago, about a rumor. We've got a source here, under Councilman Colacott, land annexation, potential annexation of Orange County Water District parcels directly adjacent to the city, and you're researching the LaFco process, its committee action under the CDC. Is this going to the CDC?
It would, it would be agendized. I believe the councilman, Mayor Protem, has asked that it be on the next council committee meeting. He's asked me to investigate what an annexation process would involve timeframes, and what the process would be. So I've been asked to report to that. So I will work, I'll be working with LaFco to research that. But it has been, he asked that it be on the next agendized Community Development and Public Safety Committee meeting.
Are we going to note, what, are we going to notify the residents that would be, that we're talking about here, so they can come to that meeting?
It was my understanding that I was to report on the process of what an annexation would be, and it would be, there'll be future discussions, this was just sort of a research at this point. I don't know-
Well, before you do the research, don't we need to identify what parcels we're, we're even trying to annex, and let the community know that maybe we're doing that before we go through all of this work? I mean, how many homes are we looking at? I mean, what homes are we looking at?
Well, we're, we're looking at a, a large area that's currently unincorporated, which could be annexed by the City of Orange, or-
Why do we need it?
There are a number of potential uses. One is to have control over what becomes of that property. My understanding is, from discussions with the Orange County Water District, who owns the property, that they've experienced transience in that area, and certainly, you know, right now, the, our sheriff department deputies do not patrol that area, so that may impact the adjacent neighbors. So we want, we're looking at control of that.
What, what homes are we talking, what streets are we talking about? What, what, what streets are actually next to this property?
Well, it all depends on the, you know, what, that's part of what our city manager will be looking at. Can we look at just a portion of the property, or do we have to look at the entire property?
What streets, though? Where are we looking, what part of the city are we looking at? We looking behind Robbie's house, on the Orange Grove?
That property goes all the way from the intersection, I guess, of Cannon and San Diego Creek, all the way down across Villa Park Road, the basins, I think we're all familiar with the basins. I think the City of Orange already has annexed the portion on the east side of the, the basins.
So you have people now who have a view of the, of the dam, and you're talking about the city annexing property to build on that property?
Who'd want to build anything on that property?
So why, why are we annexing it then?
To, to control that.
There's no issues, we haven't had any issues.
Please, I have not finished my statement. Potentially, what we did recently is, with our housing element, is we identified this area, the city halls, the city council chambers, and library, and the adjacent office building, as potential for mixed use, so that we can meet our housing element strategy. So currently, the residents directly behind these structures are concerned that, you know, if, what if there's a development there? One thought is, is that, well, maybe we could annex that property, which is owned by the Orange County Water District, which has no interest in actually developing that property. And if we, we could potentially annex that, and zone that, if it were part of the City of Villa Park, then we could zone that for the high density, meet our state mandated requirement. But the Orange County Water District has no interest in, they want to maintain that property for groundwater-
So you think, so you think that residents over there wouldn't raise opinion about that, just like the ones over here? Why are you even considering something like that?
You have one cul-de-sac here. You have-
You already approved something, and now you're talking about going and annexing right over there? Right behind my house, for one, and I bought my property for a specific reason, and now you want to move it over there? The low-income house, for what reason?
We're not moving any, we're-
Well, you, and, yes you are.
No.
You're potentially moving it.
Not at all. What we're proposing is moving the-
Who's "we"?
Me, I'm proposing this. What I'm proposing is, looking at acquiring property, again, to put it in a place where we can meet the state mandate. The state mandate is-
We met the state mandate, Bob.
We met it, we met it.
You interrupted me.
You're right, because you're trying to take people's homes away.
No, I'm not. That's, that's totally false.
You've got million-dollar, hold on, excuse me there.
It is false, or false information.
Hold on, hold on.
No, Deanna, what you're, what we're-
Let's, let's do this meeting in the CDC when this issue comes up.
Well, I want people to notify-
Why are we putting it in the CDC?
So they could come. This is huge.
I can't have any response to anything, because I'm the violator of the Brown Act, if I go to the CDC.
You would not be able to-
This is my X-B, as a homeowner.
You would not be able to, there would not be any annexation without the city council, full city council approval. What we're looking at is-
This is, this is amazing.
No, it's not amazing. What we're looking at is evaluating-
We have property already set up, Bob, and you're, you've got some, something up your sleeve to go move it over there, behind my house, for some reason, and a bunch of other people that live over there. Beth Riley lives next door to me, she lives right there, looking at what you're planning on annexing and putting up potential low-income housing.
Not at all.
Yes, you are.
No, what we're proposing, or what, what I'm proposing is to put it at a, on a parcel of property, the zoning on a parcel of property, that is owned by another governmental agency, that has no interest in doing anything but operating that in perpetuity as a groundwater recharge facility.
Well, let's have Dennis Billado come here and tell us about it. He's our representative. Before we go to the CDC, let's have Dennis Billado come here and tell us that he has no interest whatsoever.
Guarantee it, and guarantee it.
Maybe they'll, maybe they'll put a homeless encampment there.
No, and part of the, part of the objective, part of the objective is that there are, what we've received, actually what we've heard from Dennis, is that-
Who's "we"?
Me, is that there have been transient encampments there, that is currently not, since it's not part of Villa Park, we don't have any authority to address homeless encampments, or transient encampments, whatever you want to call them, on that property. That's unincorporated county, and the unincorporated, or the County of Orange can address or not address transient encampments on that property, which most practically impacts Villa Park, as they wish.
What I see happening-
I can tell you right, I can tell you right now-
That would be a high priority-
If homeless people are in, if homeless people are in there, they get a phone call from my wife, the sheriff does, and he responds very well. Not this one. The helicopters fly over, and they come and arrest them, on the other side of town, over on Prospect. I see it.
We, um-
And so do my neighbors.
Yes, and we'd have-
We'd even call about people fishing in there.
We'd have more direct control if that were part of the City of Villa Park. Right now, it's not.
You want to zone property for low-income housing. You want to take it from the county-
Yeah, let's forget about the homeless encampments.
You want to rezone it, where you have, I'm going to say, 150 homes that are impacted directly, not including coming into the cul-de-sac. And you don't want to tell these people that you are directing the city manager to start work on that, and to do research? We need to notify these people-
Absolutely.
-before we go and do anything like that.
Well-
When I heard what we were discussing, I, I, I was flabbergasted.
Why didn't you give me a phone call?
And do you have direct, do you have a letter from Dennis Billado telling you that information, or did you speak with him?
Spoke with him.
Okay.
So, again, what we're talking about is not building anything, it's to provide, meet the zoning requirement.
You met the zoning requirements.
We met it, we met it. Why do you want to change it?
Why are you going?
Why do you want to change it?
In an, in an area where, where-
In a commercial zone.
In, in an area where there would not be, it would be unlikely that anybody would build anything, because it's owned by the Orange County Water District, not by-
Then it wouldn't be accepted by, it wouldn't be accepted as a housing element, if it can't be built.
Well, it certainly was built, it was approved by the state to put it here at City Hall and the library.
Because it can be built, you can add second stories. Did you not read the housing element?
We're not about, we're not, no, we cannot. We'd have to tear down the city-
It can be built.
And you're here-
You could build, you could build anything anywhere, potentially, yes, but it's unlikely-
Who's paying you? Who's paying you to want to annex property?
That is inappropriate.
Is it?
Mayor, please.
Well, let, let, let's just have a discussion another time. This is not on the agenda.
Well, if we're going to take this to the CDC, as in the past, when we've taken issues such as parking on your Feather Hill Drive, the residents that would be affected need to be notified of what we're doing. So, as a councilman, you certainly have the right, with your co-chair, to take this item to the CDC without our approval, but you need to notify the residents. And that's, that's just how we have always done that, so they can come to the meeting.
At such time, as such time as we have some information that is sufficiently developed so that we understand what we're dealing with, so that we can share it with them, yes. But right now, we don't know. We're asking, we're at the information gathering stage.
So you're hiding it from the residents?
Not at all. It's, it's going to be on the CDC agenda, which is publicly-
What area, what address is it?
So why did that take precedence over sober living?
Pardon?
Why did that take so, precedence over sober living, all of a sudden?
How did that-
When we have an executed plan in place, we have everything taken care of. All we have to do is make-
There is, there is no precedence over any sober living.
With all due respect, you're, you're comparing apples and oranges. You've had discussions about sober living with our city manager, I've had discussions with our city manager about sober living in the meantime. You're glossing over a lot of, a lot of work, with all due respect.
Actually, there was a directive from council.
And, and with all due respect, keep the tone civil here. You're elected to represent the people of Villa Park, and to have a petty argument where you're, you're throwing accusations without basis is completely, completely inappropriate.
Actually, actually, Fitz, it would be helpful if you came prepared to this meeting-
With all due respect, ma'am, you're out of line yet again. You're out of line yet again.
So, Councilman Colacott, you have a right to put it on the agenda, but as in the past, we notify the residents what we're talking about.
Yep. Can we move on, please?
Well, may, may, may I just suggest, would it be helpful if they notified the residents that this is going to be on the agenda, that it's going to be looking at LaFco process?
That's correct.
Okay.
Identify all the residents, and, and mail, and mail it out.
Absolutely.
You have to mail it out with-
All right, fine. With notice. So let's, let's move on, then. Mayor and councilmember, now's the time to hear, and this is a councilmember information item, starting with councilmember Rossini.
All right.
You have reports or comments to share?
Briefly. May 1st, attended a meeting of the Community Development and Public Safety Committee. May 5th, attended a meeting of the Human Resources Committee. May 6th, attended the Imagination Celebration at the Crystal, Crystal Court, which is an annual partnership between the Irvine Fine Arts Center, Arts, Orange County, and Orange County Department of Education. Saw some fantastic examples of art from Orange County's children, ages five through eight, excuse me, five through 18. If you ever have a chance to go again, I highly recommend it, it was absolutely wonderful. And it might be a little biased, given seeing a few youngsters there that I knew. May 9th, attended the Villa Park Budget Planning Meeting, and just working towards finalizing that. May 17th, I attended an OCTA workshop for long-range transportation planning, and the Transit Master Plan. There will be a survey in the feeder, and I'd highly recommend that all folks that are interested in the OCTA and bus transporta, bus transportation and/or alternate transportation, pay attention to that survey, and be a part of the solution on that. May 18th, attended the Villa Park Home Security Fair, and as I mentioned, it was a rousing success, and look forward to next year. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Colacott.
Okay. One item I'd like to highlight that I participated in over the past month was the, I attended the SCAG General Assembly Meeting in Palm Desert on May 4th and 5th, as the city's representative or delegate. Two items that were key was, there's a, I attended a presentation on the GI, Geographical Information Systems by the gentleman who actually developed the concept. He's the president of ISRI, the, I forgot what it's called, but it, what it stands for, but they're the firm that really developed the GIS, as it's called, system. And he made a talk on the application of this technology to more cost-effectively manage infrastructure and other municipal programs. I also had the opportunity to discuss the application of this technology with one of his representatives, and, you know, potentially in the cities such as Villa Park. And I'll be looking into this further, and perhaps making a rec, depending on what I find, making a recommendation later on to, regarding application of GIS in Villa Park. Also, I received a copy of the profile of the City of Villa Park that was prepared by the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, and this copy of that. I got extra copies to share with the councilmen, or with my fellow councilmen.
Thank you.
This includes very insightful demographic and other information regarding our city, and I've requested our city manager, and he's agreed to provide a link to this document on our website, for review by our residents. I think our residents will find this very interesting. It talks about a lot of demographic information, our population by age, the trends in our population over the past almost 20 years, you know, where are we going, you know, age-wise and so forth, what, what age groups are increasing, which are decreasing. Interestingly, the age group 65-plus added the most population, with an increase of 712 people between 2000 and 2016. Anyway, so this information, this, this document is going to be available on the website. I encourage all of our residents to review it, you'll get a much better, a lot of insight about our community.
Director, cheers. Councilman Pitts.
I was fortunate, along with several city council members, to, I want to thank everyone who attended the Villa Park Rotary Gala recently here in Anaheim. I think it was a great evening, it was, it was not as good a turnout as we expected, but still, we had a great time, a lot of people were there. We had a silent auction, we also had a live auction to raise money. I haven't seen the final numbers yet, but I think we did okay in that regards, but But I want to thank all those who attended, including the city council members who were, who were present that night. The other thing that I failed to bring up in the earlier comments about the school advisory, I'm assuming everyone's aware that Mike Christensen is resigning as superintendent of the schools, and he will be sorely missed. So, you know, I'd like to personally thank him for his service, and he was kind to me in, in all respects when we joined the city schools advisory committee, and was very insightful in a lot of the things that he brought forth to help me learn more about what we're doing for our schools here and so forth. So I appreciate his service. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
I also attended the SCAG conference, where Councilman Colacott was the delegate. I want to bring attention to, we have a distracted driving seminar by the Orange County Sheriff's Department that is going to take place on June 7th. This is certainly geared to all ages, but primarily geared, if you will, to our teenage drivers, who will be driving around town and everywhere else now with spring break. So we're looking forward to having that, and we do have some safety signs that are going to be going up very soon, also reminding them to drive slower in the city. Tomorrow, or actually Thursday, is the first Bond Oversight Committee meeting, which I sit on that committee, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that's there. I don't know what to expect. It'll be our first one. Money hasn't been collected, but they're going to give us an idea of what's happening. I sit on that committee with, I believe, 10 other people, so that will take place on Thursday. We did have the Villa Park Women's League Spring Tour. We had a very nice presentation out here with food and wine and music, and everyone had a wonderful time. And with that, the Women's League was able to provide three scholarships to our local students of $2,000 each, and Judy, the Judy Johnson Fund actually provided two scholarships, also $2,000 each, to also two members of our local schools. So very lucky recipients of that. And that is all I, oh, we had a nice car show, Villa Park High School. I know the mayor was there. I'm not sure, did you pick the car?
I picked mayor's choice.
Did you, I'm not, I never saw what the mayor's choice was, but it was a great car.
1934 roaster.
There you go. It was a wonderful showing, Villa Park residents and everyone else at the show. They had music and food and silent auctions, and I spent too much money, and it was fun. That's it.
Don't forget, Sunday is the picnic. Picnic coming up Sunday, yes. Picnic coming up Sunday, but you've already talked about that. As Councilwoman Fasenelli indicated, I did attend the Villa Park Car Show, and I did the mayor's choice, which was a beautiful 34 roaster, Ford roaster that was actually immaculate car. It was a tough choice, because they had over 100, excellent cars out there. It was really great. I also attended the Rotary, as we talked about before. It was really an excellent thing. I loved the singer that they had, that I understand was Zimmerman's childhood friend, and she came all the way from, from Germany to do the performance, and she was really I also attended Rich Freshy, our former mayor and councilmember's memorial service this past Sunday. Both his memorial service and the little reception they had afterwards. But I had one other item I'd like to share with the council. There's a League of California Cities Mayor and Councilmembers Executive Forum and Advanced Leadership Workshop coming June 28th to the 30th. Those workshops, I think, be very helpful to our council, including one is Successful Strategic Planning for Councils. And it talks about how the city of Culver City did strategic planning, and to learn some examples of how, what they did there, which I think would really be excellent for us, since we're going through the same thing. It also has one of the workshops, Exceptional Counsel for Exceptional Times, Creating the Governor's Culture of Civility and Purpose. And the final one is how to set goals for city management performance evaluators, which I think is something we sorely need here. Registration is due by June 6th. I encourage all you attend to look at some of these important topics.
Where will that be held?
Huh?
Where will that be held?
Be held in Monterey, June 28th to 30th. Yeah, the city manager on the email this afternoon on this. Also coming up in September is the League of Cities Annual Conference. At that, I'll be making a recommendation to the council, I guess sometime in July or August, about who will be the voting delegate for that. And I would encourage all of you to, to attend that as well. And in my recommendation, I'll be giving preference to those that attend one of these meetings. Okay? So if you want to be the voting pref, if you want to be the voting delegate, I will favorably on you if you attend one of these. Okay?